Time is one o'clock. And at this time, I'd like to call to order the CPS Energy Board of Trustees meeting to be held on August 30th, 2021 at 1:00 P.M. Ms. Ramirez, would you please confirm the quorum?
Yes, sir. We have trustee Dean, vice chair Gonzalez, we have trustee Kelly and yourself, so we have a quorum and we can continue.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. At this time, we have a safety message, an invocation and pledge of allegiance by Ms. Julie Johnson.
Good afternoon. So first, we wanted to review the evacuation procedures so that we are prepared to be safe in the event of an emergency. So if you hear the fire alarm, follow the instructions in the announcement delivered through the P.A. system. If asked to evacuate, use the glass door exiting out of the boardroom to the outside, this door here. If that door is blocked, there is a door at the rear of this exit room. Verbally alert others in the room of the fire and evacuate. Then move to the main parking lot in front of the headquarters or the AT&amp;T parking lot over the McCullough and Brooklyn bridges, whichever route is safer, and await further instructions. In the event of a situation like this, our security team will be monitoring the situation and will notify the appropriate emergency services and team members. We also have employees nearby who are trained to administer first aid if needed. Safety is a top priority at CPS Energy, and while we hope this information is never needed, we want to be sure we are always ready. So will you please stand now and join me for an invocation? So we thank you for the many blessings you have freely given to each of us. We ask for your presence to guide this meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. Provide them with the knowledge, compassion and wise counsel needed as they discuss the business matters on the agenda today. Help us all to remember that we are stewards acting on behalf of our customers and provide us with the grace to serve all people well. We ask this in your name. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could go ahead, Ms. Ramirez, Mayor is present?
Yes, sir. Now all trustees are present.
And at this time, we would like to move to the speaker's registration form.
Thank you, Chair Dr. Mackey. The next agenda item is public comment, which provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on any of this meeting's posted agenda items. Here's how the process will work. We will invite pre-registered speakers to speak in the order in which they registered, with in-person commentators speaking first, followed by virtual commentators. They may only address the board on CPS Energy-related business listed on the posted agenda for this meeting. Speakers should state their first and last name, what organization or group they represent, if applicable, and indicate the agenda item number they're going to speak about. For this meeting, we have two registered speakers who will speak in person, and we don't have any registered speakers who will speak virtually. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. And Art, if you can go ahead and cue the timer. Our first in-person speaker is George Alejos, followed by Henry Rodriguez.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is George Alejos. I'm with Lulac here in San Antonio. And the reason for my appearance today is to address the agenda item, I think it's 10B3 or 10B Henry Do with Flexridge Project. It's my understanding that we've learned that recently CPS Energy decided to withdraw the request for proposal pertaining to this project. And we have reason to believe that the reason you did that is because of a letter that Franklin Energy received, which I made a copy for all of you, by the way. You should have it in your possession. That letter is a very damaging letter that implies that one of the contractors, who has done business for years with CPS Energy and with ACOG, has committed some very serious activities. We reason believe that until you do an investigation and really ferret out the truth and see if there is any veracity to these allegations, that you have been negligent in your position, not you necessarily, Dr. Mackey and the board, but the people at CPS Energy. Ten years ago, we had a similar case with ACOG, the Elmore Area Council of Governments, where they had this gentleman working for their organization in weatherization, and at the same time, he was being blackballed and impugned, and his reputation was very, very seriously damaged. We got involved and went on a fact-finding mission and discovered that everything that this man had presented to us, we then gave to the chairman, Dr. Paula Lizondo, who did their own investigation. At the end of the day, the person that got fired was the lady that had blackballed this company. Fast-forwarded now to this time, where Franklin Energy, in our opinion, is doing the same thing. They took an anonymous letter, which was poorly written, and ran with that and then gave it to CPS Energy and allegedly was accusing Cool Components and the Coalition of Minority Contractors as not being worthy to participate in this project. My, I guess you could say, my pleading today is to make sure that you all, as trustees, look into this, and if they did commit an egregious offense of maliciously libeling this, creating this libelous comments about this company, that they be held accountable for their actions. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next and last speaker is Mr. Henry Rodriguez.
Thank you, gentlemen, ladies. Thank you for your service. My name is Henry Rodriguez, Executive Director for Lulac Concilio Zapatista, and I'm here also on behalf of Mr. Gomez and Cool Component, his company, Cool Components. As you all well know, this COVID thing has taken a big toll on everybody, all the way from the small business all the way to Wall Street. But yet, Mr. Gomez has been very diligent in his service. Back then, yes, we did represent him at ACOG because there were serious problems with another company, and then we did an investigation. We did not send an anonymous letter. We made our own investigation, and it turned out that Mr. Gomez was on the right side, and they gave him the contract for weatherization. He performed admirably and diligently and very good work, and the record speaks for itself. Today, we're at a time when we hear our Congressman Castro talk about the dismal giving up contracts to minority and women-owned businesses, veterans, and yet, Mr. Gomez and his company is being dragged through the mud, and we're here to say that we will not relent on this because we believe in this man and others that are in a similar situation. Yes, everybody has had their problems, but not to the point when we let an anonymous letter pull the rug from under him. It's something that we will diligently look out for and investigate to our own. We don't want to go on a witch hunt, but it might be the case that we'll have no choice. Please look into it and not take the word of an anonymous letter and make your decision based on that. I know you all are very good at what you do, or else you would not be sitting on this board. We trust you to do the right thing, and for that, we thank you, okay? In my two minutes, that's all I can say. Have a good day.
Thank you. At this time, on item number three on the chair announcement, I would like to sincerely express my condolences for our losses within our company here and the number of employees that are in the hospital and the number of employees that are sick. And we would like to express our sincerity of this right here. And at this time, I think we have a comment by Ms. Vice Chair Gonzalez?
Actually, that's exactly what I wanted to do. I wanted to see if maybe we could do a moment of silence or prayers for the CPS employees that have recently passed and those who are also not, you know, doing well today. So that's really, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's exactly what I wanted to do, so if we could just have a couple of moments of silence.
Thank you, Vice Chair. A moment of silence. Thank you, Vice Chair, for expressing that. At this time, could I have a COVID update from the mayor? What's going on with it?
Sure. Thank you, Chair. And I'll try to be brief. As everyone knows, we've been in the midst of another wave of COVID-19 as a result of the Delta variant, which is predominantly the only strain that we're seeing right now in our community. Our positivity rate over the last couple of weeks has thankfully slowed down. We recorded a 13.6% positivity rate, which is a little less than half, or excuse me, a little bit more than half that was two weeks prior. So we are beginning, I think, to slow down in terms of the overall infections. However, our hospital system and medical community is still under severe stress, and that's where the bulk of our concern remains. We're going to be watching the numbers pretty anxiously over the next week or so, given the fact that schools are now back in session, and they have been in session long enough for us to start to see the impacts of schools. Thankfully, to that note, we still have masks mandated in most schoolrooms in Bear County, which they ought to be, given the concerns over the infectiousness of the Delta variant and making sure that we keep people, especially those who are unvaccinated children, out of our hospitals and out of severe medical care. So again, we're still watching this anxiously. I appreciate CPS Energy and the diligence of all of our businesses and organizations for taking this seriously, if for no other reason, we need to make sure that we have hospital and medical capacity for your worst day, that you will need it. And they are under severe stress to the point where it's been difficult to find resources available for other things besides COVID, and we need to be cognizant of that. So get vaccinated, wear a mask, and let's continue to do what we need to do to protect each other.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we'd like to move to item number four, Personnel Committee Assignment. I did get a chance to visit with trustee Kelly, has represented the trustee for the past 10 and a half years, 11 years. He's did a super job in being the chair of the Personnel Committee, and I want to thank him for all the dedicated work that he's presented in being the chair. And I know he's getting ready to leave in January, and at this time, I'd like to point a new committee for the chair so we can learn a lot and move forward with trustee Kelly still on board. And my recommendation to trustee is that the vice chair move up to the chair, Janie Gonzalez, and then I'll move up to the vice chair committee for the Personnel Committee Assignment. This time, I would like to open the floor for any comments or questions.
Move approval by the mayor, Nuremberg, second, by trustee Kelly.
Do we have all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the number five is the CEO's report.
Thank you very much. I will actually start my presentation and thank the board for supporting us as we've ventured through the pandemic. We've lost three employees now, and we are not about statistics here, but it is just heart-wrenching for us. There are 3,000 people that support the seventh-largest city in the nation, and every single employee on our team, even if they have the same title and the role, they do something and they bring something special to our organization. Our latest loss is a father and a husband. This Delta variant is, in some ways for us, even more intense than the original COVID-19. It's moving through our workforce fast. It is definitely wreaking havoc to those who have not taken the vaccine. We are pleading with our employees and we plead with the public to practice as much as you can in social distancing and physical distancing. We will continue to be vigilant, and wear our masks. We ask for your continued patience as we find the right balance here at CPS Energy. It is devastating for us. We also lost a mother and a wife, a mother of three, and we lost a husband and a father of a young man before Christmas. So these are real stories, and I appreciate your indulgence. It is very difficult. When Doyle passed the baton to me, he said, "The hardest thing you're going to do is lead people, and the hardest thing you're going to do is to lose them." And he was exactly right. So we will continue to update our protocols, but we are going to stick with mask-wearing and social distancing for the time, and we will continue to encourage our employees to continue to get the vaccine. Thank you, Mayor, very much. Okay, I'm going to, I will still try to move through this quickly and focus on some of the biggest highlights for our organization. You've heard that we have continually been putting focus on Storm Yury. There is so much to learn from that event, things that we knew that got intensified or magnified during the event. We recently put together a post-winter Storm Yury report. That report looks again at how we are tying our actions going forward to our Flexible Path initiatives and our guiding pillars. That report is posted online. We have broken up all our actions high level and matched those to our value pillars. What is addressing reliability, resilience, safety, security, affordability, as well as environmental responsibility, and how do we make sure, again, that we're making all the right balanced decisions in a great financial background? So we need to make sure that we continue to be financially responsible. We will continue to work that overview and our multiple detailed plans as we move forward to make improvements for the upcoming winter and, in fact, to get through the rest of the summer. I did want to highlight, and I know that you've seen this, that there is Hurricane Ida that has wreaked havoc. And while we experienced something incredible and unprecedented with Storm Yury, storms and events are going to continue. And so just, we are going to study those things. We are supportive of the utility, which is Entergy, that is fighting to get their systems back online. They experienced something that I'm not quite sure we saw from before, but their transmission lines, all their feeders to their transmission line, they had eight feeders, are all down. And there are current estimates, particularly for the city of New Orleans, that they may be down in some areas for weeks. Considering how difficult it was for our community to be down, some individuals, just horrific experiences for five days, our hearts go out to the community of New Orleans because we think that they have a very hard row to go with those systems, not just being their distribution system, but their transmission systems being down. We have released contractor crews to support that storm, and we will continue to be as responsive as possible in the help to get them back restored. Another item that is on our list is we do realize that one of the areas that we need to continue to improve on relates to communication and how we coordinate our efforts with our owner, the city of San Antonio, and with the water company, SARS. We have had multiple conversations and meetings with our two partners. We are all very interested in making sure that we are more aligned and our communication is on point. We have had tabletop and desktop exercises for all of the entities, and we will continue to practice the things that we can do to have better communications in the event that there is something major in disrupting service. We did put together this matrix that's shown on screen. So far, this is our offering to our partners about how we look at storms, whether we're in a green state, which is, you know, all things are normal, whether we are in a yellow state where we're beginning to see stress on the system. Orange is a higher alert. Red is the highest alert before we get to a black star, which means the grid has failed. We by far never want to see the full failure of the grid, but ultimately, we are going to plan all the way through for worst-case scenarios and best-case scenarios, and we'll make sure that our communication is tight with our partners. More information to come from this. We are asking our partners for feedback over the next 30 to 45 days. Moving on to page three of my report, I did want to highlight that the mayor has transitioned the utilities. We've gone from the Committee of Emergency Preparedness to the Municipal Utilities Committee, and my team is definitely completely immersed in being responsive to that committee to make sure that we have updates going to them. They have a lot of focus on storm and what we're doing to improve our processes and operations. They are also, though, asking questions, and we are having discussions about other things like our customer counts, the delinquency levels, and other things that we're looking at to help our customers around San Antonio. Another item is, we are watching, the Public Utility Commission has put out a proposal addressing winter preparation for the generation and transmission operators in the system, of which we are both, and we are looking at the high-level proposal out to the industry, and we feel like we are in great shape to address all those issues. We also expect that it will require not only the signature of Fred Bonnewell as our chief operating officer, but my CEO approval as well, that we've done all the right actions in preparation for our next winter. I'm going to skip over the search for our new trustee. I think the committee chair, trustee Kelly, is all on top of that, and I would imagine you may have some comments later on in our meeting. I do want to highlight that we have two significant events that occurred over the past month. We did our first FlexPath TeleTown Hall on August 12th of this year. We had very good participation, lots of great questions. We're going to continue to ask for feedback from the community on that strategy as we're launching our ability to bundle new solutions and to also look at our energy efficiency and conservation program. And then this past Saturday, we hosted an assistance fair at St. Mary's University, and we were very pleased. Mayor, I know you got a chance to drop by that event, so thank you very much. We think we had a great turnout. We actually couldn't handle all the people that showed up, but we did get names, and we're going to follow up with individual customized responses to those individuals. And we had the support of several council members, and we were very appreciative of Today, I'm just going to move quickly to some of the things you're going to hear today. You're going to hear from most of our senior chiefs. We know that we are very appreciative of the board ultimately approving our budget. We did have a gap in that budget. We did not have as much resources. We have continually tried our best to figure out how to keep away from asking for rate increase. We've done a lot of things over the last 12 years, but now we're getting to the point that we think by the end of the summer, we'll be looking for a request. We are not making an ask today, that is not on our agenda, but we do want to give the board an idea of how we are prioritizing our efforts, what are we focused on, and what's driving the current funding needs and then the funding needs that we'll need over the next couple of years. You will also hear about our procurement. We have heard board members loud and clear that we need to think about how to be more inclusive, how to include more local and minority and diverse vendors, and so we do have some proposed language to improve that policy and make sure that we are focused on expanding the number of people who have a chance to do business with us. And so that's extremely important to us. We did bring you a preview presentation on STEP programs last month. We do, I will say, we do need to bring you a formal presentation, and while we had a preview last month, this month, we are asking for approval to move all the programs along for about the next year. Some of the vendors, we think they are ready to go and to be in a great position to not only cover the next year, but be well-positioned for us to assess and potentially use them further. But there will be another action point in about a year for the board to look at that. We do want to take the weatherization program back out and restructure that grid. We think we can get more primes. We think we want to help local businesses actually have a better chance of being independent and not be subs. We think that's important for their development, to have an opportunity to do that, and we want to restructure the bid. So before, we were looking for a sole prime, and now we think we can handle more than one. So that was the, you'll hear that update. As promised, we're bringing you an item 11, a Flex Power Bundle update. We're moving along quite well there, and we want to make sure that the board and the community gets an update on that. And then you'll get an update on our financing plan. We continue to look for ways to keep our borrowing costs low. Our long-term rates are in great position. This is a great time to take certain debt long, but we also are looking for savings, and we need to make sure that we keep up with our filings to stay in compliance with the different requirements with the SEC. So that is the preview of what you have for today, and I'll entertain any questions at this time.
Have any questions, comments for our CEO? Yes, Mayor?
Just very quickly, I think you touched on it, Paula, but do we, we do have folks deployed to New Orleans right now to help with the, with the energy situation there?
We have released contractor crews. We use both our internal employees and contractor crews, and they haven't actually made a lot of requests yet. There's only been a request for six individuals from our community, so at this time, they've all been contractor crews, but we're going to continue to work with them for what they need.
Okay. Yeah, if you could just keep us apprised of that, obviously, we're very proud of the folks that are going over to help and as they, as we should be, but again, CPS always stepping up for other communities as well.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
Any other questions, CEO? If not, we'll move on to the next item, item number six, Enterprise Provisional Rate Case Priorities, and that is Rudy Garcia, Vivian, and Fred Bonnewell. Oh, Rudy Garcia. I'm sorry.
Well, thank you, Chair Dr. Mackey and trustees, for having us here today. I do want to start off very briefly to follow up on comment Paula made. I've got a very good friend of mine, a great Latina leader in our industry, Diana Rodriguez, is president and CEO of Entergy New Orleans, and I just want to extend my full wishes to them as they begin the process of getting back up and running. This afternoon, I'm going to start off a conversation that will continue with my peers at the chief level, and I want to begin today's presentation looking at the totality of our financial need, certainly with a focus on our customers. We strive to achieve a positive experience in every way customers choose to engage with CPS Energy, and our focus going forward is to maintain the service levels, which we've, quite frankly, improved on extensively over the last several years. And then also to be proactive in our engagement, we've continued to receive feedback, not only from our board members, but also from the community at large, that we've got to do a better job of reaching out and meeting customers where they are. And certainly, that is a very distinct focus of what we're, what our strategy looks like going forward. I've got a few examples of ways that we engage with our customers that I wanted to start this conversation with. You know, customers engage us in so many ways. They engage us online, they engage us, you know, in our walk-in centers, they call us on the phone, they, we've got so many customers. We've got so many customers that are, have managed my account access, that really engage with us on a regular basis, virtually. A lot of them don't ever come in to see us or call us on the phone. In panel one, on this particular slide, you will see that it used to take us back, oh, 18 years ago, it might take 30 minutes when you called us on the phone to get somebody on the phone to talk to CPS Energy to deal with an issue. Today, I'm proud to say that we are able to get customers in contact with one of our fantastic energy advisors 85 to 90% of the time within 30 seconds or less. That is a service level we are absolutely committed to maintaining, and that is something that is going to be part of our budget discussion as we proceed into the future. If you follow me down to panel two, we've talked a lot about the need in our community, and I'm very proud of the work that our customer outreach resource effort team has been doing over the last 18 months or so, since the pandemic started, to proactively reach customers. There, I think that was actually at the end of June, we were at 83,000 customers, roughly $31.3 million in assistance. That number's closer to 90,000 today, and we're up around $34 million in direct payment assistance to our customers through partnerships with various members of our community. So very proud of the work that we're doing to proactively engage our customers, and we're going to continue to need to do that as we pivot towards disinstituting our disconnection processes. Finally, and again, these are just examples of the most significant ways that we engage our customers on a daily basis. The growth levels in San Antonio are at just an exponential level right now. And as you can see in that third panel, the number of residential subdivision applications has increased 136%, you know, over the last five or six years. This year, we're on track to process roughly 300 residential subdivision applications. That's a huge, huge undertaking, and it requires every individual we have in our design, customer design and delivery group to be able to make that happen. This growth, this is why, you know, this is what you'll see as a common theme, I think, throughout a number of these presentations. This growth is a huge driver to some of the financial challenges that we're going to be facing in the years ahead, but we're ready, our people are capable and committed. Our customers are absolutely our number-one priority, but these are just a few examples of the types of engagement that we're really focused on. And now I will turn it over to our CIO, Vivian Bouet.
Thank you, Rudy, and good afternoon Chair Dr. Mackey and Board of Trustees. First, I want to provide you with, let's go to the next slide, please, next presentation, please. Forward that over. Okay, I was supposed to do that. So first, I would like to start with some insight on how our technology ecosystem impacts everything we do from an operations perspective and the services that we provide to our customers. So if you move with me to the first panel, you'll see a dashboard of sorts, you're familiar with these numbers, of a landscape of things that we enable through technology. Fundamentally, technology underpins everything that we do, whether we're managing hundreds of thousands of customers' information, whether we're managing $11.5 billion in assets, or how we manage the work that we do, that our employees do, or what they do on a day-to-day basis. This technology is fundamental to everything that we do. It requires a significant amount of investment for us to continue our operations and the services that we provide to our customers. Failure to continue to make investments in this technology will directly impact everything that you see in panel one. Now, if you move with me to panel number two, you will see that, as I mentioned, technology underpins everything that we do. The foundation of that technology is our data centers. Residing in our data centers is critical infrastructure that helps us in everything that we do. I'll give an example for why this is important. Just like a laptop connects an individual to the internet, a laptop connects, provides services and software that an individual uses, a laptop helps them to store data. All the critical infrastructure that you see in our data center does that for CPS Energy on an enterprise scale. Now, this critical infrastructure is how our team members engage and use software residing on that critical infrastructure. And that's depicted by those two black boxes that you see there. Now, that critical infrastructure is what we purchased in 2015 and will be end-of-life in January. And so we have to start investments to replace that critical infrastructure today. And if we don't make that transition, we will end up in a situation where we'll have a serious problem with continuity of service and with the security of all of that infrastructure that you see in, that's residing in our data centers. If you move with me to panel number three, sitting on that critical infrastructure is a lot of software. Just like in a laptop, there's a lot of software that is sitting on that critical infrastructure. One of those software, our ERP system, or Enterprise Resource Planning System, which enables a lot of what you see in panel one, is at end-of-life. It is, in fact, 22 years old. And if you pause and think about that, when was the last time that you did not replace your software for 22 years? This is something that we have to fundamentally invest in and change. So while we have to replace it, and also, our vendor has also told us that they're going to stop support for this particular software, we are going to be integrating how we replace it with a digital transformation. And the digital transformation, what that does, if you see on the right-hand side, it leads to more engaged employees, more delighted customers, it will allow us to have more business agility and adapt to what we're trying to do as an enterprise for our community, and into better intelligent, more intelligent, more automated operations. Ultimately, excuse me, the point here is that in replacing this, we will do it in a manner that derives better value for our customers, better values for our employees, and overall, better operational efficiency. So fundamentally, investment in our technology ecosystem, in our aging assets, are going to be needed in order for us to continue to best serve our customers. Thank you. And with that, I'll turn it over to Fred Bonnewell, our chief operating officer.
Thank you, Vivian. Good afternoon Chair Dr. Mackey and Board of Trustees. So this afternoon, I'd like to give you perspective on the integrated security platform. So since 9/11, we've seen a significant increase in the number of threats, both digitally and threats on the physical security side. This has been exponential to industry, as you see with this slide. So the cost that had been accrued relative to many of these threats are ransomware attacks. The recovery from these events, and most notably, is the defense that's necessary to defend against these threats, 24/7, 365. This ability to deliver gas and electric, the safe way to our customers, is so pivotal when it comes to security. And we've invested a lot in our systems, our technology, and our people to do this, but these attacks are very complex. They come from nation-states primarily, and they're going to continue to evolve, and this landscape is going to continue to be more complex, and it's going to continue to evolve. These attackers, this is their livelihood. It truly is, and it's not going to stop anytime soon. So we need to continue to provide support to our systems, our processes, protecting our assets and our people to ensure the constant flow of gas and electricity, 24/7, 365. And a lot of our ability to do this is the relationships that we built through local, federal, and regional law enforcement. This has been key, and also having relationships with industry partners, Department of Energy, et cetera. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have three speakers, Mr. Garza, Ms. Bouet, and Mr. Bonnewell. Do we have any questions or comments for these individuals?
So Dr. Mackey, Ms. Bouet? Thank you for your presentation. You caught my attention when you said we, did you say we have software that's 22 years old?
Yes, our ERP system, our Enterprise Resource Planning System, which manages our assets, our employee data, customer information data, that system and a whole host of a lot of things, that system was, is 22 years old and is, from the vendor's perspective, also at end-of-life, and we need to replace that system.
So I know we've got Ms. Gonzalez as our expert on this, but that grabs my attention. I didn't think we had anything like that going on. What would it cost to replace that?
So that's a very good question, it's a very complex question. We are very early in our planning system, in our planning process. We have come to the, to the, to the perspective, at this point, I can give you an example. For instance, when we first put the system in place over 22 years ago, it costs $70 million alone, just to do that. Now, as we look at the entire system right now, we are looking at how we can be very creative in reducing the total amount, but it is going to be at least, it would be above $100 million to replace that system. The full numbers, we are still refining, we're early in our process, but I will be very, one of the things I want to be very clear about is that the assessment that we're going to be doing to look at the entire ecosystem, to come up with a very definitive number that we want to put in front of the board members, so you can see how much it will actually take to replace it, is something that we're going to be doing towards the latter part of this year. That will then inform how much it will actually cost for us to do that. So the number that I'm giving you right now is very much an estimate, and we have used a lot of benchmark data to get to that estimate. However, I also want to share with you that we're early in our process, and I'll be coming back with some more definitive numbers in the near future.
What are the risks to our enterprise by having software that old?
So we, in our processes, on a yearly basis, and a very current, whether it's monthly or quarterly, we are constantly updating the security aspects of the software to ensure that that remains secure. But the purpose of what we do here for the community is to take every single investment dollar we put into technology and squeeze each, every single amount of value that we can out of that. So we are mitigating all of our risks on an annual basis. However, as the technology continues to go, remain old, you know, it's something that we, we're at the point where we must replace it, but no technology or security risks at this time.
I would add that the risk, as Vivian rightly explained, is mitigated in terms of operating the system. The real risk we have that we're facing is the system is sunsetting. So, you know, it's an example of, Fred may have a brand-new car that he gets to work every day, and so he doesn't have to worry about the maintenance. I have a 20-year-old junker, but I can repair it, and I have all the people on staff and all the consultants that can make sure that it's always maintained tightly. But once it sunsets, then the people that we rely on to help keep that system functional won't be supporting anymore. So the big risk is the transition to the new software, and I don't know, Vice Chair, if you want to add something or ask about that.
Just to build upon that, I think the other thing that happens is you end up spending more money in operation and maintenance, so it's best to just replace it. And so I think we've had some really good conversations on that, and you have a phased approach to include also, again, replacing old technology with newer technology, and there's different business models that exist today that didn't exist even 20 years ago. So I do think we're in a better position to leverage the partnerships we have in place or new partnerships to meet the new requirements as well as savings.
Yes, ma'am, and yes, sir.
Ms. Bouet, I want to thank our two trustees for, that was one of my questions too, and I don't think we need to hold back on that because the aging system, that mean at any time, anyone can penetrate that system and shut us down, and that's what I've been reading on all this Colonial Gas and all these other places in East Texas. These school districts are aging technology, and they're penetrating them. So that is something that we really appreciate you getting on top of. I know Vice Chair Gonzalez, in our last meeting, we talked about this, and I think it needs to be a top priority to get this done. So we appreciate you pushing forward, and let's not cut the corners on this right here, and being shut down with security. Let's make sure we on top of this right here.
Yes, sir, Chair Dr. Mackey.
Question, actually, if we can go on, would be for Rudy. Rudy, out of the 31.3 million people we've assisted, is that part of, because of Yuri, or just in general, that's been our outrage?
We started actually reaching out to customers last, in June of 2020. So from June of 2020 to today, those are, you know, 90,000 customers we've reached out to over the phone. We've called them, and through our partnerships with over 100 community organizations, we're up to about $34 million now, that number's about a month and a half old, in direct payment assistance that we've achieved.
So just to be clear, because I print the commercials, so we currently have commercials. I've heard radio commercials about people reaching out for utility assistance, correct? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
What are the other forms that individuals, both a business or personal, residential, residents can reach out? Website, are we sending out news, hard copies, like they're receiving something in the mail?
Yes, ma'am.
What is exactly, I just want to make sure you reiterate how people can reach out to us again.
So they can reach out to us virtually, through their managed my account. You know, they send us a message saying, hey, I'd like to talk to somebody, and we'll call them and work through something with them. They can call us at 353-2222, which is our primary number, and we can get them direct assistance. We're working very, very well, Mayor, with all the council members. We had four council members there on Saturday, which is fantastic, and we've committed. Adiana Rocha-Garcia, you know, our district four councilwoman, wants to do another event in her district, and we're going to do others. We've given the council members the information on the number of customers eligible for disconnect by zip code. I think your office helped us get that information out as well. So between the ads we've got going on in the community, we've got billboards up, we're doing direct outreach to customers. We're going to start a process of reaching every customer who is on the list. We'll get a letter and as many phone calls as we can possibly make to try to get them set up. So it is really all hands-on-deck in terms of the diversity we're trying to do the outreach.
Again, I want to just express my gratitude to the team out there. I know it's not easy. We constantly get criticized for not effectively communicating, so I want to make sure again that we do everything that's possible. And then if you could just repeat that number again one more time for anybody who's listening.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Rudy.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor, please.
Yeah, I think I just follow up on that, and we only need a reminder that how quickly Mother Nature can wipe out an entire energy grid. Just look on TV what's happening today. But I do want to say thank you to the CPS team that was out there at the St. Mary's event this weekend. They assisted, I think, well over 400 fans.
Yes, sir, it was close to 500.
Very good. So a couple of things. One of them, I think you're very well intuitively aware of, is that by and large, the households that are seeking utility assistance are also seeking other forms of utility, other forms of assistance, whether it's food assistance, housing assistance, you know, obviously, the other utility, et cetera. So there's a tremendous amount of overlap between customers, because everybody who's been hit hard has been hit hard across the board. The second part, which is a little bit more, I think you'd have to dig in a little bit more, is that there is still a tremendous number of people who are coming up to those events who just didn't know there was assistance available. And our message there for them is that you're not alone, we're here to help, there's assistance available, we need to get you connected. So those point-to-point, in-person events, having those around town, piggybacking on other events that are happening, incredibly important right about now as we're getting into a phase of resuming the disconnections, making sure that we're in front of as many people as possible who may not, for whatever reason, been aware that there was assistance available and getting them connected. And I know the council members, all of them, will be working double-time to reach out to their constituencies. So there's going to be an endless number of events to get out in front of folks, even if it's just one or two people with a table. The folks out there this weekend did an excellent job. So the more that we can do that, I think the better off everyone will be, because we also need that relationship reestablished.
Yes, sir. Mayor, I'll point out, one of the things I'm most proud of with the team members who've been out in the community connecting customers with assistance is if you come to one of our events, not only can you get assistance for energy, for your energy bills, but we'll connect you to housing assistance, get rental help, we can connect you with SARS. And so it's really, really a one-stop shop. And so it's really, really a one-stop shop in terms of, you know, the work that we do with all the available assistance out there to help get our customers connected. So we're doing everything we can to try to not only take care of them on their energy bills, but, you know, point them in the right direction anywhere else we can.
Thank you, Mr. Garza.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bonwell.
I can. Mr. Bonwell?
What kind of risk do people have when they try to break into our system to get our information or to try to get funds out of us to reopen our systems, et cetera, et cetera? Is, I guess the example is, if I decide I want to rob a bank, I'm putting myself at risk. I'm going in there with a gun or a knife or something. I could get shot. Something bad could happen to me. But if I'm sitting behind a computer terminal and I'm trying to break into your system, what, what risk do I have and what can we do to make it more risky for these people to take this type of action?
Well, we do several things. First of all, we have an online mailbox that monitors all of the inbound email in real time. And so if that system detects any irregularity, those irregular emails are automatically moved to quarantine, number one. Number two, and the biggest thing we can do, and we have done, is provide a significant amount of awareness training to every employee. The easiest way for them to get ahold of someone's system, wherever it is, is to get ahold of my account, my username and my password. And so by doing that, they send a fake email. They're asking you to click on it. Once you click on it, then you have, you've taken the bait. And then from then on, they're, they're in your system, and they can monitor you. And then when you click on your username and click that in, and your password, they become you. So this, this can, this threat can happen to every one of our employees. 3,000 employees are potentially vulnerable. So another thing we've done to assist our employees with the awareness is any inbound email that's external is flagged across the header with a yellow banner that shows this, in fact, is external.
If I could add, though, it's not the same, to your point. Trustee Kelly, these people work pretty much cloaked. They're very experienced on having, being able to disguise their identities and to be able to ping us remotely and cloak their IP addresses. I mean, they're, they're very experienced. However, our alliances with local, state, and federal agencies allow us to triangulate information that we have. And so those entities are always looking for the source, the true sources, whether they be, it could be nation-state actors, or they could be kids. And the more that we feed that information into the system and work with them, sometimes there can be a tracking down of those sources, but it is very, very difficult.
But I think to answer your question specifically, Mr. Kelly, I believe I understood your question was, why would they want to attack us, right? Why would they want to get into our systems?
How can we make a difference for them to do that?
Well, I, I think that anybody who has large sources of data is why people, you know, will attack systems, right? They want to get social security numbers, want to get credit card information. They want to get all sorts of data. Data is power. And with that information, then they can do things they're not supposed to be doing, right? So I would have to tell you that, you know, why we not have this part of a standing item on the agenda is because it's real serious, and a lot of these conversations most likely are best to take place in executive session versus public, and mainly, again, because of the nature of how we protect systems as well as the information that we guard here at this organization. And so you have a great team. I definitely would recommend that you get a one-on-one session with Fred's group and get a better insight into the things that we do.
Hey, thank you all, and this time, at this time, we'll move to item number seven, and Operation Provisional Rate Case Priorities, and that's generation, Frank Almeraz, grid, Paul Barnum, and gas, Fred Bonwell.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I think we have a couple slides of introductory here, but we've already introduced Paul, Fred, and myself, so if we can go to the next slide. Or wait, I guess I have the control here. There we go. All right, well, I'm Frank Almeraz, the Chief Business Development and Power Sustainability Officer, and I'm just going to take a couple minutes here to brief you on what you see here on this slide, number three. I'll first start by saying that I'm really proud of the efforts that the operational teams have put forth over the last years to make sure that we're bringing efficiency, we're bringing cost management, deploying technologies to do things more efficiently and for less cost than we would otherwise have to. And we pass those costs along to the rest of the organization and thereby delay the need for additional rate support. So I'll start in the quadrant up there labeled number one, top left. That's our carbon intensity over time. And I think what is something that people are now developing more insight into is the fact that credit rating agencies and financial markets are placing a real interest here on environmental, social, and governance practices. And that has a direct implication for our credit rating and which has a direct implication for the cost that we have to charge our customers. We have made great progress on this front, much to do yet. The top right quadrant labeled number two is a depiction of our capacity over time. We're going to retire a whole lot of generation over the next few years. Our brawning units are going to come of retirement age, our summers units will as well. And there's discussion about what other units might need to retire over that timeframe. And as we replace that capacity in our fleet, we know that we're going to add a lot of generation, and much of it is going to be technologically advanced. To make sure that we get all that we can out of that generation, we're going to need to spend money on enhanced control systems, on analytics, and on monitoring and operations over time. On the bottom-left panel, number three, the wholesale power market that we operate here in Texas is, you know, also known as ERCOT. It's an energy-only market. It's changed over the last few years. Our units are being asked to run in a way that they never have before for a variety of reasons. Prices have become more volatile, but they are lower on average than they have been in prior years, which means our units have to start more often, they have to stop more often, they have to ramp up and ramp down in ways that they weren't intended to. And those aging resources, you know, are developing a good bit of wear and tear as a result, accelerating costs. The other thing I'll mention here is that, asking our teammates, I mentioned that we were operationally, we were working to be very efficient and effective with our resources. One of the ways that you can do that is to ask our team members to do more, which we've done year in and year out. And I've been very proud of our team and the work that we've been able to do and what they are doing every single day to keep power flowing to our community 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Relying too heavily on this tactic of asking teammates to do more for too long, however, could be a risky proposition. The bottom-right-hand corner, number four, you can see some pretty big numbers there. Those are dollars in millions. These are things that we need to do in order to bring our generation fleet to a, an essential level of reliability and resiliency. The $20 million in the bottom-left is dollars that we've already spent, that we've talked about before related to weatherization and such since 2011. The dollars to the right, approximately $100 million, are different significant categories, from reliability to alternate fuels to fleet resiliency. What I would point out is that these are fairly well-aligned to what you would find in the Committee on Emergency Preparedness Report and Action Items, but these are independent items that we have developed. I want to also stress that these are the basics. They are not advanced capability like alternate fuel for the entire fleet or monitoring and diagnostic capability for the entire fleet or, you know, advanced control rooms and so on. These are the basics. So we have been very focused on cost efficiency and effectiveness, asking teammates to do more, looking for opportunities to save money and to be efficient. We cannot fund our reliability and resiliency efforts into the future that way. You can do it for so long, and we have done, I think, an extraordinary job, but there are dollars to spend in order to bring this fleet to where it needs to be from a reliability and resiliency standpoint. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you this afternoon. And I'm going to pass it to Mr. Paul Barnum. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. It's good to be here this afternoon. And there's two aspects that I want to emphasize related to our, our grid and the investments needed as part of this package. So the first is growth, and others have mentioned growth.
Can you advance your slide?
Yes, I can. I am sorry. Thank you, Paula. It's always a team effort here. So growth has already been mentioned, and honestly, all you have to do is drive around San Antonio, and you see growth everywhere. But one aspect of that growth is, that's impacting us, is the underlying material costs. You look at material costs for some of our underlying commodities, lumber, steel, copper, aluminum. What you'll find is those underlying commodities have increased 100% or more over the last five years. And so those are costs that essentially we've been having to absorb. And it does not appear that those prices are turning around anytime soon. The second piece I wanted to emphasize is around change. So a number of aspects of change. The first one, just being change related to growth from years ago. So our infrastructure is aging. So equipment and infrastructure that was installed 30, 40, 50 years ago, poles, wires, transformers are reaching end of life and are need of investment. Somewhat related to that is Paula mentioned impacts of storms and weather. So as our system is older, it's more vulnerable to impacts of weather. And we have seen that our storm restoration costs over the past five years have doubled. And that doesn't even include the impacts of Yuri and the restoration costs there. And, you know, as you've probably seen in, in the news, that forecasts are those impacts of storms, as we're seeing going on in Louisiana now, are, are only going to get more severe. And so it just further emphasizes the need for investment in the hardening and modernization of our infrastructure to make it more resilient. Another aspect of change is around technology. So Vivian talked a lot about technology, and there's kind of two pieces to that. One, technology creates opportunities for improved efficiency and flexibility of our system. But there's also technology going on around us that we have to respond to. So things like electric vehicles growing in our system, the battery storage that's being put into our system, expansion of solar into our distribution system. All these create the need for a more flexible and control system for managing all those technologies that are going into our, into our distribution system. And not to mention that our control systems, as Vivian mentioned with ERP, our control systems for the grid are at end of life. And so it is not only a point where we need to upgrade those systems just for support, but it's also a huge opportunity for that increased flexibility that will allow us to do things such as better management of load shed if that event ever occurs in the future, where we have better ability to manage that. Another, one other piece I wanted to mention that's somewhat recent is, this is, this, this request is a bit of a moving target for us. And I'll point to the, in, in working with our, our partners over at the city, we understand that the city is moving forward with a $1.2 billion bond program, just another indication of the growth of our city. 50% increase over the past bond program. What that means for CPS is there are many of those projects that we have to invest to support those new roads, those new sidewalks, all those things. Without having gone through the, through those projects, we're roughly estimating that's probably another $3 to $5 million worth of civic investment on our part to be able to work with, with the city on those projects. And so all these things are drivers of increased cost for us. And the investment in our grid is absolutely critical to not only maintain, but improve the reliability and the resiliency of our system for better supporting our customers. And thank you.
Thank you.
I will turn it over to Mr. Fred Bonnywell, who's going to talk about the gas system.
Thank you, Paul. I appreciate it. So I'm back with you again to share insights into our gas solutions business. But first of all, I'd like to thank every single employee of CPS Energy for your day and night and around-the-clock contribution to what you're doing to keep the electricity flowing and the gas flowing safely. Thank you very much. So when we think about gas, we have to go back 161 years. This company began as a gas company. It was foundational to how we serve this community, and it's continued to do that. When we think about gas, we think about its contribution is very significant. Our customers have really preferred gas in many ways, as far as cooking, for example. They prefer that. I know I do. But it also provides a benefit to reduce down on gas emissions and emissions generally as compared to other types of emissions. It's helped out with affordability to the customer as well. But when you think about gas, you think about it in terms of safety, resiliency, and reliability. And the absolute most important aspect of it is safety. We have to make sure that the gas stays in the pipe and it's safe to operate. And we are heavily regulated in this business around safety as it applies to the Texas Railroad Commission and to the Pipeline Hazardous Materials Safety Administration, PMSA, as we call it. These two organizations were formed to provide regulation around safety because of past events, and it's just, it's just. When we think about resiliency and reliability, we've seen a huge growth in our, in our gas business. The gas business, frankly, actually performed very well during the storm. We did not have any major interruption. And we did that because collectively, we stayed up in front of our growth. And to stay in front of growth, you have to mitigate that by expanding the pipe to allow for that growth. And it speaks to that on this slide. We see a continuance need for gas in our system and our community at large. We have installed nearly 900 miles of pipe over the past five years. We expect to go over 1,000 in the next five years. And the growth is significant, and the attention to safety is paramount. We cannot afford to have one slippage. It's absolutely zero tolerance. So when it comes to, to gas, we have to make sure that it's safe. And if it's safe, then our public is safe. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, comments, for the individuals?
I think this, I have a question for Paul. And you might not know the answer, but I'm just curious with the amount of rain we've had. I know I've had a hard time keeping up, well, actually, my husband, cutting the grass. It's like every two weeks, he's out there cutting the grass. So what has been the cost associated? And I've seen it significantly, especially in my part of town, which is the west side. I just took a picture, sent it to Fred not too long ago, where I see the lines heavy with vegetation. with vegetation on it. So have we promoted the program for citizens to call and business owners regarding, I believe that's the service we provide, correct? Can you talk a little bit about that? And then can you just shed some insight if we've seen a drastic cost increase because we're addressing the problem?
Yes, we do. So we maintain the vegetation around our, the primary lines that you see up on the poles. That is, you know, obviously hazardous work, so we have well-qualified contractors that we utilize for that work. Yes, it has been a difficult year in terms of, we refer to it vegetation management, so tree trimming. But we, yes, so what we have seen this year is because of exactly what you're saying, a lot of our vegetation work this year has been reactive. We will tend to see, you know, maybe 60%, that will be proactive, planned vegetation work that we're, you know, trying to stay ahead of things. This year, it's probably the other way around, where we're seeing more reactive work from, whether it's maybe calls from customers or probably more often where we're seeing reliability problems, and we go out there, and it's driven by just the rapid growth of the vegetation.
And again, why is it more reactive this time versus proactive?
Just, just because it's such rapid growth this year.
We just can't keep up with the demand, is basically what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, due to the, again, the constant raining, and then just with the growth in San Antonio, it's been really hard for us to be proactive. We're just having a hard time keeping up with the demand of the need. Okay, just want to be clear. And what is that number, just in case people need to call? Not that we need more work, it sounds like it, but...
The number, that's probably a Rudy question. I don't recall off the top of my head.
Can they go to the website and find that information? Okay, great. And so it's just basically vegeta, not vegetation management, not vegetation?
Yeah, if they call the main number, they'll get them.
Okay, great. They say tree trimming.
Tree trimming, yes, that will...
Fancy word here, but it's tree trimming.
I'll also point out, Vice Chair, that last Friday, our team, under Paul's direction, as well as with our partners in the city, we held a seminar for all the suburban cities around vegetation management. We brought in an arborist. So I attended it. It was very effective, and it was very educational in terms of giving them tips on how to stay in front of this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? If not, we'll move on to number eight, workforce provisional rate case priorities. Ms. Lisa Lewis.
They're switching presentations.
While we're waiting for that, customers can call our main number and report tree trimming. So that's 210-353-2222.
I'm going to advance to number 29 in your packet, page number 29. I'm here to speak with you today about workforce retention and growth. We are entering a five-year period at this time that is exceptionally critical for our workforce. You heard from my peers today about how our work is changing and how the technology is divided between old and new. For our people, over the next five years, what that means is we're going to be spending a lot of time upskilling and developing our mid-career team members to use new technology and onboarding and doing knowledge transfer with new people to help them come up to speed on the things we already have today. The technology changes that we are talking about are increasing the needs and the requirements for STEM roles. And hard-to-fill STEM roles, science, technology, engineering, and math, like engineers, grid operators, cybersecurity specialists, and many others are becoming harder to fill in the post-pandemic labor environment. The pay is rising quickly with the demand, and I will direct your attention to panel one on the slide. A new college graduate engineer that we could hire in 2019 for $67,000 a year is now turning down our offers because they can get a job for $85,000 a year plus a signing bonus as a brand-new college graduate, and we are losing out to other bidders. I have an extreme concern about that particular group because their, our ability to recruit engineers is fundamental to our success as an organization. These are good-paying jobs. They're the kind of jobs our Economic Development Foundation so eagerly seeks to recruit. At the same time, over the last more than 20 years now, our workforce is the lowest I've ever seen it. In the last 10, 12 years, we've dropped by about 25%. So since 2007, we've dropped 25% in workforce, and the customers have increased at the same time period 33%. That's about 16,000 new customers per year, the blue line in the panel two being employees and the orange bars being customers. You heard Frank speak to how proud we are of our workforce for adapting and growing and building their skills and working across multiple positions, but we are at a critical juncture now, and we need to course correct in order to maintain productivity. The third panel, you'll note, the number of employees who are eligible for retirement. This is adding pressure to our workforce. We anticipate 30% of our workforce will retire or is very likely to retire within the next five years. You can see that almost half will be eligible. Our experience tells us they do not all retire, even though they are eligible, but 30% is a good estimate. Our authorized headcount for the next five years is planned at 3,400 personnel, and that means we will need, between the needs for new positions and the retirements, we will need to hire more than 1,000 new team members in the next five years, and this is what we are building into our budget. People account for about half of our operations budget annually, and they are the linchpin to our success in transitioning to the low-carbon future that our customers are expecting. We have to invest now in our workforce through retention, hiring, and skills development in order to serve our customers and make the technology transitions that our customers are expecting. That's all I have for you today. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Lewis?
Let me just make a comment on your second slide. I have talked a lot in the past about measuring employee productivity by looking at employee count by FTE and that type of thing. And just looking at this graph on number two, I did some quick analysis, and these are round numbers, but if you look in 2007, it looks like each FTE handled about 171 customers. If you look at that today, each FTE is handling about 300 customers. If you do the math on that, that's a compounded growth rate on real productivity. And you know the difference between real productivity and inflated productivity. This is a compounded, real productivity growth rate of about 4% a year. That is phenomenal. If you look at the economy, the larger economy, and do a secular look back on the U.S. economy, our growth rate in real terms has been about 1.8% in the U.S. economy. So that means you're doubling the growth rate in the economy. And I just want to congratulate Paula and the team in terms, I know the technology's had something to do with this and other things, but to double your productivity roughly per employee or per FTE over the last 14 years is incredible. And so kudos to the outstanding work you guys are doing in growing real, honest-to-God productivity, not inflated numbers, honest-to-God productivity.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Lewis. We have, this time, we have Corey Kaczynski, Chief Financial Officer, review of the provisional rate case. Preview, not review, preview of the provisional rate case.
Good afternoon, Chair. Appreciate that, and good afternoon, Board of Trustees. Appreciate being here today. I do want to take a moment to thank my fellow chiefs for coming up and spending a few moments to dive into their organizations and speak to the challenges that they are seeing. So I'll take an opportunity here today to summarize some of these, contextualize some of the comments they made in the context of a provisional rate request. So if we go to the next slide, I'll have three objectives. Today, I will summarize our journey since the last rate request and talk about the changing circumstances that have occurred since our last ask. Secondly, I'll provide some information on the drivers around our need, which will summarize a lot of the comments that we've heard earlier today, and then preview some of the numbers for our potential rate requests later this year. The agenda, sir, aligns with our objectives. I'll have a slide around the journey since 2014, contextualize some of those changing circumstances that I spoke to, and then we'll dive into our path forward to achieving financial stability and what that means in the context of this ask. So with, excuse me, with any major decisions, we always run them through our guiding pillars, which is underpinned by our financial responsibility. This rate request is in fact a tool to help us ensure that we continue to be financially responsible, keep up the great history that CPS has had. So we'll spend some time on the next two slides here. We've heard this phrase before. We've only had one rate request in almost 12 years. Last one was nearly eight years ago. We said it a lot. We wanted to contextualize what the last decade looked like and answer a couple of questions from this slide. First one is how did we avoid the several previously planned rate requests? The second is what are some of those other value-added initiatives we provide to the community over that last decade? And so the first thing that stands out on this page, underlining, excuse me, the green bar, is the amount of savings that we've identified over the last decade. And you can see that we've identified over $900 million in cost savings since that time. And that is nothing to brush over. I want to thank our dedicated employees who've spent a lot of time and sacrificed looking for efficiencies and productivity, as you mentioned, over the last 10 years. The other key driver is around wholesale sales. We've talked about that before, but if you look at 2018 and 2019, you'll notice we have two large numbers there, 147 million and 121 million. These are substantial. To give some context, an average year would be closer to 40 or 50 million dollars. The combination of these savings over the last decades and these two strong years in 2018 and 2019 have really enabled the three avoided rate requests that you see on this chart with the green line through it. The other thing to note is what have we accomplished over that time? Well, we launched our new energy economy initiative almost 10 years ago, and that has been a huge benefit to the local economy. We also purchased a lower-emitting real gas plant, and we also decided to close our oldest coal plant, Dealey. And we also achieved our step milestones, our original step milestones, and we've been working towards our flexible path strategy specifically in the context of our Flex Power Bundle. So with that journey in mind, there are, as we mentioned earlier, and you heard from a lot of the chiefs, the operating conditions that we work in have changed significantly since our last rate request. And I like this slide because it identifies a couple of key stats that really summarize the various messages you heard earlier today. The first one is around growth. We've talked about that. You heard from several chiefs. Since our last rate request, we have added 125,000 electric gas customers, electric customers, and 36,000 gas customers. That is substantial growth in our community, and growth is good. We appreciate that our community can do that. But that has meant some investment in the infrastructure. I'll note that our peak demand has increased over 220 megawatts, even with the energy efficiency that we have promoted over the last decade. And in terms of investment, we've added over 1,500 miles of electric lines, over 1,200 miles of gas lines. All of that culminated in about $1 billion in investment since our last rate request, all the while doing that on the same pricing that was established back in 2014. And as Paul mentioned in his commentary, the cost of materials and to make those investments has gone up. So you can see how the circumstances and the consequences of those can create pressure. The other area that you heard a lot about today is around safeguarding our assets, specifically physical and cyber. And you heard a lot about cyber. I won't dive into that too much, but as we spoke about, that is a key area that we have had to dedicate additional resources towards in order to keep up with the attacks that continue. And Vivian spent a lot of time talking about the underpinning technology, and so did Paul, actually. A lot of those technology platforms that she mentioned are over 20 years old, and those are going to be key elements that are driving our request. Now, all said, since our last rate request, we've seen a lot of these changes, but we've been doing all of this work, as Stressy Kelly pointed out, with fewer employees, a little over 300 fewer employees. And while that is absolutely a positive and speaks to the productivity that we have seen, as Lisa alluded to, to keep up with the growth in this community, investment will continue to be made into our people, and that will also form a component of our request. So with all these changing circumstances, we wanted to, again, highlight how we proudly continue to contribute to the city. Since our last rate request, you can see the various annual amounts we have contributed through our transfer to the city, notably significant between 330 million to 370 million in any given year. And we've done all this while at the same time actually lowering average residential and residential electric and gas bills. We don't often talk about this too much, but we took a snapshot of fiscal 2015, which is the first full year after our last rate request. And you can see that on average, bills are about $10 lower than they were back then. And I think that's fantastic for our customers, and we're really proud of the effort that we've been able to put forth since our last request. Okay, so with that as context, bring back a slide that we had seen at the previous May presentation. There are really three elements we've identified to achieving financial stability. And the first one is shoring up our operations and growth. That's what we had heard about earlier today at length. The other two components relative to shoring up our financial condition is around addressing the impact from the pandemic and the impact from Winter Storm Yuri. In both cases, we spoke at length in terms of the pandemic, how we're constantly working to get our customers connected with support where they can. Rudy spoke to that today. But the reality is we have over 110, almost 120 million in past due accounts that is creating real pressure. And the other item is the Winter Storm Yuri. As everyone knows, we have incurred invoices of up to $1 billion. We have been diligently working to reduce that number. But again, the reality is we will have to address those costs going forward, and I'll speak to that in a minute. So this slide, I'll go briefly over this. This is really kind of an encapsulation of all the drivers of sustaining operations that we heard earlier today. You'll note much of the dollars are addressing reliability, resiliency, growth, civic improvement projects, keeping up with the strong service levels, maintaining financial stability, and shoring up our credit ratings, keeping up with technology, as Vivian alluded to, and safeguarding our assets and safeguarding our customers. We've had a decade-long of cost control, but at this point, a rate request is going to be critical to supporting our daily operations. I'll briefly flip this slide on the screen here. Our next one is just a look at the previous presentations that we had back in May that highlighted the three components of this rate request. And you'll note the high end of that request was about 9.5% from a total bill perspective for next fiscal year. I'll go on to the next slide to contrast that. What we have here is an updated view from May that does a couple of things. On the left-hand side in blue, you can see the section that we characterize as support for our basic operations. This is for work that is a must-do. These are not wish-list items. These are for core operations that you heard our leaders talk about earlier today. You'll also notice two elements on that request, the pandemic bad debt, which we spoke about, and the winter storm Yuri. I'll note that those two items continue to show a top-end bill impact on the screen, recognizing that we are continuing to work down, best we can, the outstanding bills from our customers as it pertains to the pandemic, pandemic past due amounts. The other item around the winter storm Yuri fuel, we continue to show what a top-line recovery of that billion dollars looks like, spread out over 25 years, which is our previous recommendation. A couple of things about this. One, I do want to acknowledge that the city has kindly recommended to not include city payment recovery on that amount, so that has actually brought down that bill impact by almost a half a percent from what we saw in May. The second item I'd like to mention is recognizing this top-line bill impact is necessary to send the appropriate messages to the financial markets indicating that even in a worst-case scenario, we have the willingness and ability to pay our obligations and our bills. That said, as we know, and as Paula has mentioned, we continue to work down that amount as best we can. And the reality is, as we begin to implement a rate request, hopefully at the end of this year, that number will be lower than what you see on the screen. We continue to demonstrate with that high-end number. We continue to demonstrate what that high-end number could potentially look like. You also see additional consideration to address debt paydown. This is something that is in alignment with our financial integrity and our efforts to manage our debt-to-capitalization ratio. And then, of course, in terms of operations and growth, you heard a lot of the different projects and needs from the organization earlier today. A couple of the highlights are around supporting projects that address the Committee for Emergency Preparedness Recommendations. But you heard a lot from Vivian around the technology upgrades that we need to include. And also addressing some of the questions we got in May, we do have placeholders included in this request for Flex Power Bundle, which you'll hear obviously more about today and will continue to, and dollars for Flex Step, which will continue to take into consideration. So all said, our revised number is closer to the high-end estimate that we saw back in May, 9.6% to 10.6. I'll note these continue to be preliminary numbers. As we come back later in September, we will hone and refine these numbers in the coming weeks as well. But I will draw your attention to the right-hand side of the page. These are additional items, additional options that do a couple of things. They either add additional value to the community, and we want to identify what those were and the corresponding cost to a rate request, or they're additional items that we have heard feedback throughout the years to address, and we want to contextualize that with what a bill impact around some of these additional exercises may look like. I'll note in the middle there, there are other items around resiliency, security, and reliability that add up to a little under a 1% total bill impact. We also have some additional options on the far right-hand side, one that addresses further debt paydown. You'll note this is additive to the amount you see in the blue box. This is really in recognition of the effort it would take to bring back our debt-to-capitalization ratio closer to pre-storm levels and accelerate the decline of that metric down to 60%, which ultimately is the trajectory that we are looking for maintaining going forward. In terms of undergrounding, we get a lot of questions about that cost. We've said before, it's about $1 million a mile for investment. So our teams went to look at about what converting 10% of those lines would look like, and that is a substantial investment at about 15%. So again, I'll mention, these are preliminary numbers. We are putting them out here for visualization and discussion. So I'm going to close with this slide, well, two more slides. I want to close with a view here on our financial metrics. And oftentimes, I view this as if you are going to a doctor, and we go in for our physical, and we get our vital signs. If you're doing well, great, and if you're not, then we need to take some action. This is basically the view of CPS Energy's vitals. And what this tells is a pretty, pretty simple story. In the middle column there, you see what the estimate with the 9.6% to 10.6% rate support looks like. And you'll note that our metrics improved significantly, resulting in a year that culminates next year with a net income of $76 million. In stark contrast is looking at fiscal '23 without those dollars, and you can see that all of the metrics are substantially below our threshold amounts. I will note that in the instance of debt-to-capitalization, even with our rate request, we flash that as red. And that is why, as part of the options on the previous slide, we indicated what an additional paydown would cost to come down to our 63.4. I will note, though, that in either case, we are looking at a downward trajectory of that metric, just at a slower, slower speed. So we absolutely recognize that there are additional considerations we didn't talk about today. Affordability continues to be an element of consideration for both our board and the community. We will continue to speak about the different programs we have and our thoughts around what we can do to manage the impact of any rate request to those who are currently on existing programs. We'll continue to focus on our generation strategy, as we discussed earlier, as Rudy has spoke to previously. We do a large amount of customer outreach that we're very proud of, and we'll continue to do outreach in each individual council district as we launch our process. And we'll continue to speak to and acknowledge where the dollars are spent within our community and take that lens going forward in future years. And we'll continue to speak to any of the elements of rate design that have come up through community discussions. And ultimately, all of this information will be provided to our advisory committees, the Rate Advisory Committee and the CAC Citizens Advisory Committee as well after we present here today to the board. So that concludes my remarks. Myself and the other chiefs are here for any questions. There's no vote today. This is a preview, and we will intend to come back later this month. In the meantime, we can answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I do. I have questions on the undergrounding. That 15%, does this address a lot of the concerns about the older neighborhoods in San Antonio as far as equity investments?
It's a general calculation. So to your point, we can look at putting that strategically so that the customers all across San Antonio, particularly that area, can benefit. So it's a general high-level estimate.
Well, I understand it's a high-level estimate, but would that address a lot of the older infrastructure in the, in the 410, inside 410?
We would definitely put a good portion of that investment there. We'll have to do that and look at where there's...
Other areas, but primarily, we would also, from an equitable perspective, focus within...
That would be a major input, as well as if we're having some extenuating circumstances all over the city.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you for the presentation, Corey. And I think we all understand this is an extremely important asset that we've got to maintain, and that's largely what's driving this and the fact that we haven't been through a process like this in quite a number of years. As we talked about last week, one of the things I'd like to see is we get toward... And so I understand this correctly, some of these tranches within the provisional rate, including pandemic bad debt as well as the winter storm Yuri cost, those are windows that you expect to get refinement on the numbers as we get closer.
Yes, sir.
What we talked about last week, and something I still feel would be necessary, is that under the winter storm cost, since a lot of those are to be determined due to litigation, that we, the dollars that are already out with regard to expenses related to costs during the storm, those are already costs. Those are already operational and should be largely fuel adjustment costs. Those are part of operations. Those are separate and apart from the parts of the provisional rate that are in that window. So if there's a way of, you know, again, giving us a little bit more specificity about what that is in a different category, because again, it's largely unknown at this point what that, what that window's going to be. It's separate and apart from the operational side of the winter storm cost. Again, very much up for dispute, in dispute with regard to the total cost that would be incurred.
Any more questions, comments?
I just wanted to jump in on this one. So I understand exactly what you are saying. The billion dollars that, you know, was incurred is in dispute, and we are fighting tooth and nail and making progress along the way. And to your point, we have not spent all of that money. We paid, we have paid for the cost of fuel, as you indicated that we needed to, to maintain our position in the market. But I want to highlight for everyone, to date, we have saved over $800 million in cash liquidity claims that came to us from ERCOT right after the storm. So we've been fighting. We got a request to float the market about $800 million so they can settle it, and we felt that that was not San Antonio's responsibility to do that. We also avoided a demand payment before we were ever invoiced of over $300 million. We fought that and won. We were surcharged an incorrect charge for $17 million because they misread our contract wrong. And we have been, actually, we don't, we don't get a lot of notoriety in the paper, but we have won multiple protections for this community, force majeure protections, venue protection. So that fight is active and moving well. And we've saved over $1 billion in cash so far. And we're also fighting for not just what happened in the storm, we're fighting for when there's another storm, and there's a storm in Louisiana, and, you know, heaven forbid, we hope that we don't have anything major anytime soon. But we're fighting so that the same behaviors that happened by ERCOT and certain natural gas suppliers is not automatically repeated, because we don't want another billion dollars. So the fight is about protecting us from overcharges now and overcharges in the future. To your point, the gross amount of just that, not just the cash, but the expense, that is the total, and we are bringing that, that number down. What we believe, the general view of this, what it's going to look like is, we will have a good firm estimate. We believe it'll be below the billion dollars, and that's the max. And so the regulatory asset is meant to cover us and tell the financial community that San Antonio was fighting. We understand our exposure, but they're fighting, and we expect this team to do this. Whatever we put through in costs will not be the max. It will be the money that applies to what is really vetted and unconscionable and equitable charges that we have been able to vet. And so all the difference, we need the authorization so that we can continue to get the board and the council update, but we will not push through that maximum charge, to your point.
Yeah, I think the more we can recognize that and remind folks of that, again, this has never been a dispute about our ability or willingness to pay fair costs. The dispute is very much about things that happened in a broken market. And frankly, because the public owns this asset, we need us to fight on their behalf just as much as people want to see those costs come down. So at any rate, I do appreciate the recounting of what's already occurred. There is significant costs avoided already, but that continues. And just again, as we get closer, getting more clarity and separating what has already been incurred from what is part of that potential window is going to be important.
Yes, sir. We'll keep refining that and making sure that it's clear when we do come forward that we're splitting that out. So it's an important point that we know we need to make sure is clear to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Krasinski. Appreciate that. Item number 10, procurement review. Procurement policies and procedures update. Ms. Lisa Lewis, General Service. Mr. Rudy Garza, and Professional Services. Mr. Benny Etheridge.
Thank you, Board. I do not have a formal presentation for you today. I just have a couple of comments I wanted to share with you briefly. We have heard concerns about the timeliness of payments made by prime vendors to subcontractors. And one way that we, in terms of the supply chain team, can address this challenge is to modify our standard contract language where appropriate regarding payment terms. So in some cases, we will be adjusting our language from net 30 days to do upon receipt in order to facilitate subcontractors not getting paid in a more extended period. Second, we've had several conversations with different board members about updating the board's procurement policy as well as the board-directed procurement guidelines. Those are two documents that belong to the Board of Trustees, and both of those documents are in your packet in their original form in a redline version. The procurement policy was initiated in 2002 and last updated in 2017. When it comes to addressing supplier diversity, that document speaks only, the policy speaks only, to the fact that we will maintain a supplier diversity program. But within the procurement procedures, there are some more specifics included about how we manage and develop our supplier diversity program and our local economic development focus. We are proposing to strengthen the language in the procurement procedures that CPS Energy is required to solicit at least two diverse vendors for services between $25,000 and $50,000. The current language says we will contact them. Also, rather than encourage prime contractors to use reasonable effort to engage diverse subcontractors, we are requiring our employees, our vendor selectors, to maximize opportunities within our supplier diversity program and directly drive that initiative through our contracting efforts. Comparison between the language for these two versions begins on a, in a summary graph on page, or a table on page 159. And you'll have that side-by-side comparison of current and former language. We think that the modified language will better clarify the expectations for our team, and we are seeking your feedback in the future to this modified language, and we'd be happy to work more closely with you. To improve our overall effort around contracting this year, we have coached our executive leaders on expectations and best practices, registered more vendors in the last year to widen our pool of potential participants, and debundled some contracts to provide opportunity for multiple vendors within a project or work stream. You will see an example of that in one of the purchases we have before you today to take advantage of that strategy of debundling. Our supply chain team is preparing a request for proposals to conduct a supplier diversity study, and we anticipate releasing that RFP in the third quarter of this year. The study will help us evaluate our efforts and set metrics for our program. We're committed to spending as much as we can locally and to maintaining our supplier diversity program so that the dollars paid by our customers are leveraged as much as possible for the benefit of our customers. And that is all I have for you today.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Lewis? If not, for General Services next.
Well, good afternoon again, trustees and Chair Dr. Mackey. Again, I'm Rudy Garza, Chief Customer and Stakeholder Engagement Officer. What we're presenting to you today is a preview of three, or two procurement items, really, that will carry our Step Bridge programs through the end of the Step Bridge period. As I've discussed with the trustees about this item, the board and our city council gave us authorization, basically, to continue Step Bridge through July of next year while we're working on the Flex Step, the future of the Step program. And so our contracts didn't quite align with the end of the Step Bridge program. We've had contracts in place for our energy efficiency and weatherization programs, really, since 2016. Those contracts are at their end. We've got to have board action in order to be able to continue these programs. And so that is what this item is intended to do today. So today, I'll be providing you context, again, on these two procurement items. We're going to talk about how they align our guiding pillars, and again, I'll walk you through the items themselves. Really, I'd like to think all of the guiding pillars are supported by the Step Bridge program. There's something in it for every customer. It is certainly impacts the reliability of customer-owned infrastructure. It impacts the affordability, especially for our lower-income housing stock in San Antonio, and really supports the entirety of our guiding pillars. So Step Bridge is very much a strategic program for our community. As part of the Flex Step program development, we released a tried-and-true component, RFP, and we released a innovative program, RFP. And really, we were trying to accelerate, to a certain degree, the tried-and-true RFP because we knew that this deadline of August 31st was coming. And so we were going to try to get these contracts in place, really, to bridge us through the end of the Step Bridge program and give us the optionality to continue those programs into the Flex Step era. So item one on this procurement really covers our energy efficiency programs, both residential and commercial. Item two will involve the weatherization program, which are key components of our current Step programs. So item one, again, the residential and commercial energy efficiency programs, which I'll show you on an upcoming slide, really, those are rebate programs. We have an administrator, a third-party administrator, that really administers the issuance of rebates directly to our customers. Those programs, that those dollars really flow right to the customer, and there is a subcontractor on the other side of the customer that the customer contracts with to be able to do the programs that they're funding and, you know, with our rebate in part. Item two is the weatherization program. You know, we are, instead of issuing new contracts for weatherization, we talked as a leadership team, got some guidance from Paula, and really, it's been conversations we've had here at the board level. A lot of board members are interested in us figuring out a way to support the subcontractors that really participate in the weatherization program. We believe that we can take subcontractors that today are working through a third-party administrator and really make those prime contractors of CPS Energy. So we would like to go back to the drawing board on the weatherization contract and just extend the current contract to be able to continue helping customers improve their housing, their homes, and continue the economic activity for the vendors that are, that are currently participating in that contract. Again, these are just some specifics. We would award a new contract for residential and commercial energy efficiency. ClearResult is who we are proposing awarding this 11-month contract to. It would allow us an option, if we move forward on Flex Step, to be able to continue the contract. to, uh, continue the contract with this particular administrator, uh, into the Flex Step, uh, period. Uh, but, but let me reiterate, this is only an 11-month, uh, term that will get us through the end of the, of the Step Bridge period. When we talk about the energy efficiency programs, if you look at, these two charts really show, uh, that a nominal portion of the overall contract goes to administering the contract. That's accepting rebate, uh, applications, that's, uh, going out and, and marketing, uh, for those rebate programs. It is, uh, uh, working with customers to get those applications approved and closing out, uh, with verification of the projects to ensure that the project gets completed so that, uh, we've got that verification. So, uh, in, uh, the, the residential side, 77% of those dollars go directly to customers. On the commercial side, 80% go directly to those customers. So this really is just an administration, uh, of the overall program. Customers own the relationship with the vendor. On weatherization, uh, looking, Franklin is the provider currently of our weatherization administration services, and they, uh, work with our subcontractors on the other side. Uh, up there is a list of subcontractors that we work with predominantly, uh, that help us execute on all the weatherization opportunities that, uh, that our community, uh, is currently undertaking. The value of this contract is a little over $10 million, uh, and certainly, there is a tremendous, tremendous amount of economic activity associated with, uh, our weatherization efforts in our community. So today, uh, we've got a few options up here. I, I want to reiterate, um, you know, the, our, our, our recommended option is to approve option number one. That would allow us to award contracts, uh, for the, uh, uh, energy efficiency components to ClearResult, uh, and extend our weatherization contract with Franklin, uh, to get us through next July. In the meantime, we're hoping to bring, uh, a Flex Step proposal to the board, uh, later this year, uh, at, at the latest, uh, early in the spring of next year, uh, to, to, uh, give us an opportunity to talk through what our options are. We've gotten feedback on, uh, Flex Step that maybe we want to bring some options of what, uh, those programs look like. You know, maybe we focus in on low-income, you know, programs specifically. Are there some ways, uh, to slice and dice, uh, what that, uh, Flex, uh, Step program looks like that really hone in on, um, you know, the policy directives that the board might be interested in, uh, moving forward? Uh, but, but today, what we're asking the board to consider is just allowing us to get through the end of the Step Bridge program, uh, and option number one is our recommendation. Option number two would be to just extend our current contracts for 60 days. That, the board would, would basically be authorizing us to spend an additional $5.6 million, uh, to fund us for that 60-day period, uh, that allow us to continue this conversation, uh, if, uh, if, if the board feels that's necessary. And option number three really is just a no-action option. If the board does not take action today, uh, these programs will, will, will stop, uh, tomorrow. So, uh, we would begin the, that, um, you know, that process of pausing our programs while, while the board, you know, continues to provide us with, with the proper, uh, guidance. Uh, so that is our, uh, preview for our Step Bridge, uh, contract procurement items, and I will stop there and ask if the board has any questions.
Um, at this time, we have, any board members have any questions? Because I'm looking at that procurement review, and it's going to come up on the, uh, number 13 item under consent agenda. Item number one, general service, general services, weatherization program, general services, efficiency, energy efficiency program, and then professional services, engineering services, uh, services for power generation. So these three items we're covering are going to come up, uh, for consent agenda if anybody would like any questions. Comment?
You, you would be disappointed, uh, I know, Rudy, if I didn't have a couple of questions. Um, my wife told me that I am being too overbearing, and that I needed to be much more, uh, engaging. Well, you're going to hear my best engaging, uh, stuff here. Are these programs going to go on forever?
Mr. Kelly, that is obviously a decision that the board has to provide us guidance on, and so, uh, we are prepared, uh, to continue, uh, these energy efficiency and conservation programs, uh, to the extent the board, uh, allows us to. Uh, I will tell you, as the, the chief responsible for executing these programs, I think they're an important part of our overall strategy. I think they provide us diversity in how we look at our resource plan to allow us to extend the current assets we have longer as our community grows. We're get, we are going to have to build infrastructure to continue to provide generation into the future, just as a result of, um, the, the way our community is growing. I think energy efficiency and demand response has a place. Uh, so, um, you know, it, it's good for our customers. There are elements of our Step program that, that are out there for, for, for every segment of CPS Energy's customers, and so, uh, you know, there are a lot of, again, going back to our guiding pillars, you know, that's good for the environment, it creates affordability options for our low-income, lower-income customers, certainly is, uh, innovative in terms of some of the solar, uh, programs that are in there and, and other new technology that comes about every day. Uh, so, you know, as the leader responsible for the program, when I look at the, at the overall, you know, uh, construct of the program and the benefits, uh, to both CPS Energy and our community, uh, you know, I'll stand here and say, yes, I do believe there's a place for energy efficiency and conservation in the future going forward.
Forever?
Again, sir, we take these in increments of, you know, years, so whether that's five years or 10 years or into perpetuity, uh, you know, we will bring the board, uh, optionality for deciding, you know, uh, the policy on energy efficiency and, and carry these programs forward at the discretion of the board.
Well, that's my point. This program's been going on now probably at least 12 years. If we go through August of next year, like you're talking about, we will have spent either a billion dollars plus or minus, use it as a round number, billion dollars. And I think we need to sunset this program, and I think we need to go back and ask ourselves, something we did 12 years, do we now have to do it forever? That's what happens to government programs. You get them started, and they never stop. Uh, and that's what's happening here, in my opinion. And so what I would like, number one, obviously, I would vote for number three, given a choice, because I think this program is the most illogical program. I'm trying to be nice again, guys. Probably the most illogical program I've ever heard in my life. It reminds me, if I were a director of Toyota, and my production people came to me and said, you know what? We're selling so many Toyotas that we're going to have to build another plant to keep up with, with ourselves. And I say, whoa, 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 no, 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 don't do that. Charge our existing customers a lot of additional money, use that money to go fix up the Toyotas that are already on the road, and we won't need to build a plant. This is the same thing we're doing here. And what's going to happen over a period of years is we're going to lever this company up to the point that it, it's going to be irreversible. And I've said it over and over and over. We're not a charity, we're not a, uh, social agency, we're not a debating society. We are a company with $12 billion of assets and a million 200,000 customers that depend on us every day. So we need to run it as a business, and so I, I've never seen the logic of this program, and again, like that, I don't want to get into that. But why can't we just say, okay, fine, we'll run this program, take it all the way to August of next year, and we'll spend, spend another $100 million. Go ahead and take it through August, but between now and August, let's do a really, really deep dive and ask ourselves, why are we doing this? Isn't there a better way? I remember there were two reasons I heard initially why we wanted to do this program. Number one, to keep us from building a new plant and, and, and building up further in particles and, and, uh, degradation of the, of the environment. That's no longer applicable. If we build a plant, it can be a wind plant, it can be a solar plant, it can be a nuclear plant. So the fact that we don't build a plant doesn't have a thing to do, in my opinion, with whether or not we're going to be environmentally insensitive. The second part was, well, but it helps underprivileged people. Great, I'm all for that. But we give the city a million dollars a day, every day. Seems like that, they could take on some of that. Plus, I'm looking at a deal here where we have eight different programs that were listed the other day to help the underserved. I care for the underserved as much as anybody, but the city, that's their job. That's not our job. Our job is not to take care of the underserved. That's the city's job, and we give them a million dollars a day so they can do that. So, again, long story short, I'll go along with your 100 million, plus or minus, to run this thing through August, but between now and August, I respectfully request that we do a very deep dive and ask ourselves, does this program still make sense after 12 years?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any other questions, Mr. Steen?
So, uh, Mr. Garza, we had these preview meetings, and so we've discussed this, but, um, I think you'll agree that, that transparency is one of our core values, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. What does transparency mean to you?
Well, transparency means to me that we operate, you know, in the purview of the public eye, sir, so.
Yeah, we're just going to be open about everything, right? So, uh, harking back to the discussion at the last meeting, um, we, we were told that, uh, every one of us that's a customer of CPS Energy is paying for STEP, monthly bills. Madam CEO, correct?
That is correct.
Right. So I got out my bill to, to say, where, where does it show that I'm paying for STEP? And, and, and I asked you this during the meeting, uh, it, it doesn't show up on the, on the reverse of the bill. Electric is, is broken down there to, to five different, or maybe, yeah, five different things, and I ask you, where is STEP in there and where is it?
It's in the electric fuel component of the, uh, electric bill, sir.
So it's under fuel adjustment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I would, I would just submit that we, we ought to pull that out and have it listed separately so people know what they're paying for STEP. I think that, that'd be the, the way to do it. I, I, I think that, I think we've called STEP the fifth fuel, but it's not fuel. It's, it's something different. And so I think it would be a good idea, I would appreciate it as a customer, to know how much I'm paying for STEP every month. And I think I ask you, uh, you said you polled on that, right, somehow, on, on whether people are aware that they're paying for STEP?
Yeah, we, we, one of the questions that we ask, and we, we do market research pretty frequently, but one of the questions we ask is their awareness of STEP, and, uh, you, more customers than you would expect, you know, recognize it's, it's, it's in there, but, you know, last, I, that, that last number I saw was probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 25% of our customers actually know, you know, they're paying for some energy efficiency programs. And most of them are probably customers who have benefited or have family members that benefit from the program. So certainly, there is an awareness opportunity for us, uh, with the community.
Well, and, and I think I told you I was surprised it was 25% because it, it, it's sort of, it's, it, I, I, I want to say it the right way, but it's kind of hidden in there. It's really not set forth where the customers can see it. So that's a, that's a change I would suggest.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. When you're done, I'd like to...
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Let's, let's let him, Mr. Steen.
No, no.
Be courteous.
I'm fine.
I want to hear you. No, 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 but she wants to comment on this part of it.
I'm good.
I insist, you go ahead.
I, um, we can definitely, uh, do more breakouts on the bill. That is a, you know, believe it or not, that's a pretty big deal to change the configuration of the bill. Um, one of the things that we'll be able to do with the new ERP system is look for additional, um, transparency on line items, so we can do that. I will highlight, though, you, you don't have a breakout of solar, you don't have a breakout of wind, you don't have fixed costs associated with the gas units, and you don't have costs associated with, with coal units or, you know, the, that, those separations. So what, what we're doing is, we're serving this community on a portfolio of assets, and it depends on which assets are performing and which, and what problems you may or may not have that really produces, like, through, in a month. Storm Uri will cause a distortion in the numbers and all those kind of things. So our job is to put everything into one big pool and try to smooth that impact. At one time, you couldn't, you couldn't put solar in the pool because it was just way too expensive, and we've increasingly been able to bring it down. So what we do a lot of things are, is smooth those costs in over time. I understand that, you know, currently, the board, we're asking you, look at STEP, and we're asking you to give us more funding, and we're asking you to support that. But I would just highlight that there are other things that are blended in the bill too. So what we'll do is we'll work more with you in the next year or so to see what you would like as we go through the new ERP system, to look to see if we can do more of that breakout. But we, we have a lot of things in the bill that, that maybe you want to think about.
Well, we're, we're discussing this, people are listening to us, and, uh, I, I think they might go to their CPS Energy bill after that discussion at the last meeting and say, where is, where am I paying for STEP? And I think the last fiscal year that our customers total paid $80 million, is that correct?
Um, between 70 and 80 every, every year.
So I think it's, I think it's something that, I, I'm just speaking for myself, but I think a lot of customers would feel that this way, that I'd, I'd like to know that, 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 that we're spending that on STEP and not have it, in a sense, buried in the, uh, something called fuel adjustment, which doesn't seem, I don't know...
But once again, solar's in your fuel adjustment, and so is wind in your fuel adjustment. I just want to make sure, uh, just for clarity, we're trying to be transparent, there's a lot of things in your fuel adjustment. Coal is in your fuel adjustment.
And then, and then, uh, Mr. Kelly was talking, uh, to change it, so that, that's a suggestion for you, but it, but, uh, about the original STEP program, and it met its goals, and then there is a tendency to, to go on and on. And so I know that, uh, my colleague, Mr. Kelly, would like to eliminate the STEP program, right, Mr. Kelly? Right? But I was just wondering if, if there's a, uh, if, if there's something else that we could consider, uh, and I, I haven't really formulated exactly how this would work, but if, all the financial stress that we're experiencing as a company because of the pandemic and the winter storm, and, um, i- it, it's difficult for me to think of continuing business as usual. So it makes me think about STEP and that $80 million a year, $70 to $80 million a year, whether this enterprise could use that money to shore us up. And so, uh, could we consider, uh, not eliminating the STEP program, but hitting the pause button on it? And maybe for a few years, uh, moving away from it and using that $80 million a year to help us, and we need help.
Well, STEP is definitely a choice, and so we can definitely break that down for you in the future, have different ways to look at it and how to, the investment levels. Um, so we can definitely show you more.
Okay. Mayor?
Just some thoughts. I mean, I, I think it would be an incredibly instructive experience if we sent out bills that disaggregated all of our fuel adjustment costs. I think people would really see, uh, how our energy is being produced and what they're paying for on, on a daily basis. We don't do that. I don't think we can do that, but, uh, if we did, I thought, I think it would be very instructive. Of course, STEP is part of that. Uh, they were, it's here because we made exchanges 10 years ago, 12 years ago, to do this instead of other things, which we very likely would be paying a whole lot more for than we're paying for STEP. But all that aside, because I think that there are, there is ROI on, on STEP, at least from the first iteration, we, we did achieve our goal. So the question is a good one. What is our next goal? And I think that's what we're trying to identify, and I'm all for, uh, as, uh, trustee Kelly suggested, that we need to take a look at this soup to nuts, find out what, uh, our, our goal is, uh, examine what the true ROI is, and set some benchmarks for the future. I think that's exactly what this is calling for. Uh, with the extension, uh, we are giving us a time-certain, um, uh, period to actually get that restructuring and recalibration done. So whether you're a fan of STEP or, uh, you want it discontinued immediately, I think what we're affording ourselves here is, is an opportunity to, to get the data and the analysis that we want. And I think while all these other discussions are happening, um, some of them with, uh, rate, uh, rate design, uh, we take a look at what, what it is we're trying to achieve. I, I believe wholeheartedly, um, not just from a, 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 a triple-net perspective, but also from a financial perspective, we're, we're going to see, and our customers... perspective, we're going to see, and our customers are going to tell us, that this is the kind of program we want to continue to invest in because the cost is relatively small compared to the impact that the individual family who most needs it is getting from it. So, but I'm more than willing to go into this next period, eyes wide open, and request and demand the data that supports the program if we extend it beyond that period. So, with that, Chairman, I'll support the staff recommendation today on the extension, and I look forward to getting all that work done in the meantime.
If I could comment, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. On that note, I would agree with the mayor where we have, if we go with option one, we have 11 months to do a couple of things. I think the assessment of the program and to validate some of the concerns that you have, or also I might highlight that the program has naturally involved to meet new requirements of our city council and just our end users. That is of conservation, equitable investments, that, those are just two items that I can think of top of mind. And safety, for God's sake, some of these homes, if it wasn't for that program, would not meet safety measures for everyday, and the hardworking people of San Antonio. The other thing, though, that we could do also, we did have two individuals who spoke of concerns of Franklin Energy. Now, I know what it is to be a small business organization, and a lot of the things that were pointed out happens, you know, but there's also a lot of small business organizations that are committed to doing the right thing, just like maybe Franklin Energy is doing the right thing. I would also like to see, not just of Franklin Energy, but of all the vendors, an audit of how they're performing, how they're doing, where we can support them. I think it's a good time within those 11 months to do that. So, it's not just about Franklin Energy Company, but it would be in general to do a fiduciary responsibility for both the large primes and the small business contractors to see where we're at. At the end of the day, it's an investment. We should be responsible for the procurement of that investment. And so, on those notes, I agree with Mr. Kelly that we need to review the value of the program, but I also believe firmly in this program as someone who grew up with no air conditioning. My mom, to this day, doesn't use air conditioning because she can't afford a fluctuation in her bill, and I know that she's also been a candidate of this program. You know, my main concern a lot of times is for the senior citizens of this community. It's not for the individuals that can apply and qualify for a lot of programs. A lot of times, senior citizens live on a fixed income. They don't qualify for a lot of programs, and I do believe that that serves a purpose, especially for that demographics. And so, you do have my support for option number one with the conditions that we do an overall evaluation of the program, see if we can pivot the program or refine the program, and then also evaluate all vendors that are supporting it, both large and small.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. I too agree with all trustees that we're not a charity in doing all of this, but it's, at this time, we're under financial stress in this, and we definitely need to do a deep dive in this company. And I approve of it for the next 11 months, but a deep dive and seeing if this program is meeting the needs of today. It met it 11 or 12 years ago, but is it meeting the needs today? I'd like to know more about this because Mr. Kelly and I visited with Mr. Garza a few days ago, and I do have some great concerns about it, the program. The program is great. No concerns about the program, but it doesn't meet the needs that we're looking forward to today. I asked too, Mr. Garza, that I'd like to see a list of other charitable things that we're doing. You know, you said you was going to give me that list, because if we're going to do this one, then we need to start looking at all of them because there are some things that I think that are very important to San Antonio. Number one is working with that SARS program, on that water program that we had a meeting about a couple of weeks ago, that 80, eight, I think, six water storage covers about 80% of the employees. So, you know, that's something that I like to look and working with them on and looking, you know, instead of being a charity, that's supporting the entire 80% of San Antonio supplying water. So, I'd like to look at more of that right there and not focus more on charity stuff, but things that are conducive to CPS in moving forward.
Yes, sir. We've been pulling that information together, and we will send a communication out to the board right after the board meeting. And I do believe, Mr. Mayor, this is a consent agenda item, so you'll vote on this item as part of the consent agenda.
Yes, sir. It's number, it'll come under consent agenda item 13.
Dr. Mackey, this is a good point too, and I know you all do it all the time at city council, but we should probably pull this off the consent agenda and vote on it separately.
When that come, we can pull it off.
Right. Otherwise, you're putting, perhaps some of us in a position of voting against the consent agenda when there are items contained within that that were for. Before we move on, because I am concerned about the financial stresses, you talked about the problem from the winter storm and the big numbers we're looking at there. Again, quantify for me the issues related to past due utility accounts. In other words, is that, isn't that a $100 million problem?
I think we're up to 120-ish million.
So, again, think of what Mr. Kelly said. Well-intentioned people 10 years ago, whatever it was, started this STEP program, and the idea was to do this rather than build a power plant. And that, and over the 10 years, I guess it's been successful, right? We would have had to spend 800 million on a power plant, but instead, we, you know, we did this STEP program. So, again, I'm probably going to vote against this, but what I'm trying to bring into focus, and Mr. Kelly does this more often than most of us, is looking at the big financial picture and guarding against this idea of let's just keep doing this because we've been doing it. Maybe we shouldn't. We could talk about whether to continue this STEP program, but is there a way that we could, we could pause it and somehow utilize that $80 million to help us? I know it's more complicated than that, but that's my thinking.
The one thing I want to clarify, just to be helpful, the authorization, you know, these costs are incurred and paid, and so it's a full cost recovery in a little bit. I just want to make sure that we don't give the impression that if you didn't spend the $70 million, that would drop to the bottom line. It doesn't. It's just a cycle problem. It does take on capacity on the bill. And so, if a person is spending, if a person gets their bill, their bill is probably around $3.50 to $5 in certain years, $5 a month higher because of this program. So, I would say that we will follow the will of the board. Our recommendation is to give us the 11 months to do everything that you ask, and we can bring forward more dissection of this program even at the rate increase point. What are we doing? You know, how is it impactful? What is it as a choice compared to other choices for the rate increase? But just stopping it, I think, would be detrimental for the community. They don't have notice. They didn't know. People are in the pipeline. I think we can manage this as an outlier cost recovery period and have a checkpoint during the rate process. And if you then want to catch up with us again and ask us to shorten that timeline, that way, we can do proper notice to the community and tell them what's going on. But we would still, management still recommends item one at this time with some touch points for the board and council.
Thank you.
I do, let me make another comment, though. I do think that Trustee Steen is onto something interesting here. If you were to look on the presentation that Corey made, our impact on the rate increase we're talking about, if you look over on page 67, would be from $9.70 a month to $14.60 a month, if I read that right. That's the full increase. I asked the question recently, how much are we hoping to increase our revenue by this rate increase? And I had a number of roughly $180 million a year. I then asked the question, how much will STEP cost us over the next year? And I heard a number of roughly $80 million a year. So, you could roughly cut your rate increase in half just by suspending STEP. I've heard the number that STEP is $3 to $4 a month. Okay? The total increase is $9 to $14 a month. So, if you pull $4 a month out and attribute it to our operations rather than the STEP, you've probably cut your rate increase at least in a third, if not more. And putting it in dollars and cents, we're trying to raise 180 million a year, and we're spending 80 million a year on STEP. So, pull STEP out. Now, we only have to raise 100 million a year. So, maybe what Trustee Steen is talking about makes sense. Let's suspend the program for a period of time. We are in a financial, I don't want to use the word bind, but we're certainly in a financing challenging time right now. And if I can see $80 million a year flowing into my coffers to offset 180 million that I'm trying to get on a rate increase, I'm going to take note of that. And the other point that I think he made, the original program was to raise, spend 800 million and save so many kilowatts. Well, we've done that. We've done it. So, let's put a big red bow around that package and say it was a success. We'll have a big success party. It was a fantastic success, and we may do it again sometime, but right now, we can't. We need the cash. And so, we'll just take the 80 million a year, and we'll apply it towards our rate increase. And instead of asking our customers for a rate increase that generates 180 million a year, we'll just ask them for a rate increase that generates 100 million a year. I think there's some logic to that, that we should look at very, very carefully.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Garza.
Thank you.
This time, we have Mr.
I'm sorry. Are we going to pull it and ask for a vote?
No. Well, we, okay, we have one more individual on this in professional.
You want to do it at the end?
We're going to do that, and then we'll suspend the rules, and then we'll move it up and vote on it.
So, Dr. Mackey, when Mr. Kelly was speaking, I was, I can't help but look at you, Ms. Go, because you're right across from me, and you were nodding your head. What did that signify?
It signified, I think, when he was making the estimates, I think the estimates will probably be, it'll bring it down. The total rate increase at the far end that we had was probably around $15 of bill impact. And again, we're talking about 3.50 to 5. So, I just want to clarify, it probably wouldn't bring it down 50%, probably a little bit less than that if you didn't do it. So, I was just rolling through your calculations. When you got to the third, I think that's probably a better estimate. And again, it's choices. These programs are all choices that we can make. Now, you all approved the funding of the program previously, and the council approved it through ordinance. I'm still a little sensitive that we would be here. I want to make sure clear that management is not asking you all or not recommending that you kill it immediately. I think there's a process that we need to do to make sure, again, that we don't shock the community and do it the right way, but we'll definitely be able to do some of the things even in the next couple of months with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Garza. Mr. Benny Etheridge?
Well, good afternoon, Chair Dr. Mackey, trustees and leaders. I'm Benny Etheridge, Senior Vice President of Power Generation, and I'm here today to ask for your approval to move forward with an engineering services agreement. This is a five-year agreement capped at $36 million that's funded out of our approved budgets. Perhaps in the interest of time, I could move through this presentation pretty quickly. It was included in your packet. Just hit the high spots. So, our motives here are reliability, customer affordability, environmental responsibility, safety. With our support engineers, we're able to effectively maintain our plants with the staff we have. That's why this contract is so important to us. We, of course, used an RFQ process, request for qualifications. We identified 23 contractors. We worked through an evaluation process, nine of which rose to the top. And of those, get to it here, of those, seven identified as local, small, and diversity status. We feel like we're making good inroads here. What we would propose to do is award $4 million to each of these contractors for a total of $36 million to meet our needs. Some we use for larger projects and some for smaller. So, our ask today is that you approve this and let us move forward.
Mr. Etheridge, did that cover our winter weatherizing program out there, you know, that we, at the winter freeze, and engineers have looked at that right there?
Yes, sir. That's correct. In fact, it's our current agreement that we're using now to support the engineering we're doing in preparation for this coming winter.
Okay. And, okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Hey, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Etheridge?
Let me ask a question. We had the earlier discussion on contract procedures and policies.
Yes, sir.
Is that going to impact this in any way? Or what's the relevance of that to this, if any?
The proposal that we have on the policies going forward, so we're going to keep working on it and take another 30 to 60 days to get your input, so it does not affect this proposal.
So, you're not asking us to approve the new contracting policy today?
No. No.
Oh, okay. Well, I thought that was on the consent agenda to be. Oh, okay.
We were just trying to provide context.
It's our regular engineers that we use for during the year for all kinds of services for them to look at.
Okay. No, but I thought the consent agenda might be approving the new contracting policy. Okay. I'm good then.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Etheridge. At this time, trustees asked to suspend the rules and move item 11 consent agenda up before we go into, before we do the flex power bundle update. And if we suspend the rules, then we're going to move it to consent agenda approval of consent items. A, minutes of special board meetings held on 7/9/2021. B, minutes of the special board meeting held on 7/15/2021. C, minutes of the special board meeting held on 7/22/2021. D, minutes of the regular board meeting held on 7/26/2021. E, minutes of the special board meeting held on 7/27/2021. F, payment of the City of San Antonio for July 2021. Procurement items. At this time, we're going to pull one and two and go to three engineering services for power generation. That is on page 164. And H, resolution appointing a successor's record management officers on page 225. Ms. Shannon, could you read up 225, that resolution, before we do that?
Mr. Chairman, what about agenda item 11?
Okay. We're going to go back to 11. We suspended the rule because we were talking about this one, and you had brought up a concern about pulling that to vote on it. So, why, it's fresh on everybody's mind, and we can go ahead and look at this.
Can we pull also this one, the engineering?
Which one?
To vote it separately?
That's your choice, yes. Okay. And we want to pull one, G, one, two, and three. Okay. If you read the resolution, Ms.?
I don't think that we want to pull three. I think.
But three is the one that Benny needs.
Yeah, that's three. I want to pull.
She pulled it. She pulled it.
I don't want to do.
Yeah, she pulled it.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah, she pulled it. So, we'll vote on the other one separately.
They're teaching me something.
Okay. Ms. Ramirez?
Yes, sir. Whereas in 1989, the 71st Texas Legislature adopted House Bill 1285 and thereby enacted into law the Local Government Records Act, currently codified at chapter 203 in the Local Government Code, which provides for the establishment, promotion, and support of comprehensive, active, and continuing records management program for all of the local government offices. Whereas, the board, as mandated by section 203.026 of the Texas Local Government Code, passed a resolution establishing an active and continuing records management program to be ad. to be administered by the records management officer at its December seventeenth, nineteen ninety, regular monthly meeting. Whereas the CPS Energy Board of Trustees, as mandated by section two zero three point zero two five of the Texas Local Government Code, passed a resolution designating the current records management officer at its April twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, regular monthly meeting. Whereas the records management officer is responsible for administering the records management program in an efficient manager, manner, as prescribed by the state regulatory requirements, and for carrying out the duties delineated in section two zero three point zero two three of the Texas Local Government Code. And whereas it has become necessary to designate a replacement records management officer due to the resignation of the previously designated officer in order to continue the administration of the CPS Energy Records Management Program, now therefore be it resolved by the trustees of CPS Energy that pursuant to section two zero three point zero two five of the Texas Local Government Code, Tammy Flemmons is hereby designated as the records management officer for CPS Energy, and be it further resolved that in accordance with section two zero three point zero two five of the Texas Local Government Code, the designation in this resolution shall be filled by the direction, by the director and librarian of the Texas State Library and Archive Commission within thirty days after adoption of this resolution.
Thank you. Ms. Ramirez? At this time, we have on the consent agenda approval of consent agenda A, B, C, D, E, F, and H. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Steen. Oh, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kelly. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, none opposed, motion carries. All right, we have procurement item G under consent agenda, item thirteen, procurement item, general services, energy efficiency program by Mr. Rudy Garza. Can you just give us a brief so we can, just brief us on it, what we getting ready to vote on?
Yes, sir. Once again, thank you, Dr. Mackey, Chair Dr. Mackey, and members of the Board. What we're asking you for is new contracts for the residential and commercial energy efficiency that will carry us through the step bridge period for eleven months through July of next year, and an extension of the weatherization contract for the same eleven months. Really is just providing additional funding and allowing us to extend that contract to get through step bridge.
You combined both of them, but we're doing item number one.
Yes, sir.
So could you be?
Item number one is the residential and commercial energy efficiency programs. That is the clear result contract.
Mr. Garza, what's the dollar amount on, on each one?
The dollar amount, uh, it's, uh, on the first contract, it's a little over twenty million dollars for item number one.
There's the, oh.
And item number two would be Franklin.
Franklin, item number two, is, is that a week?
Right, and that's option number one.
And just for clarity, that on clear result, that's the one that has the rebate?
Yes, ma'am.
Primarily.
Those are the rebate.
Majority of that is really dollars that go directly to customers in their installation. But all the money flows through them as like a general contractor. So that's different than going into the energy efficiency and conservation where the, the subcontractors are getting paid to do work at the house. So one's rebates, the first one's rebates, and we think that that program just works because the majority of the dollars go to.
First one is rebates, and the second one is?
Is, is work done at the home, like weatherization?
It's the weatherization, that component. Yes, sir. Number two.
Tightening the seals and those kind of things.
A question on either one of these, do we have a time limit? Because I know we're.
Eleven months.
We're talking eleven months.
Both of them?
Both of them, both of them, eleven months, and we're, um, we're, this is the one that we're talked about a few minutes ago, doing a deep dive on.
Yes, sir.
Within eleven months, whether we want to proceed with this for future reference.
Yes, sir.
And when we say deep dive, exactly what does that mean to you?
Well, what it means to us is that we're going to give you accountability factors for all of the programs that have been part of the step program. And I think it would include optionality based on policy directives of the Board. If you want to focus on low income, I think there are some ways to slice and dice it to show you effectiveness based on, you know, the packages that you might be interested in us taking a look at.
And you asked for cuts at the performance of individual contractors and vendors underneath the agreement, as well as looking for an ability to audit the service work. And can we, and maybe, again, we have a lot on our agenda today. What I would recommend, if, if we'd go with option one, and we have eleven months, what, what committee would that fall under so that we can decide what those factors are for the deep dive to address the concerns of Mr. Kelly and Mr. Steen? Well, I think, I think it's an operational program, so we can definitely bring it to the operations program. And I think we could bring it. I definitely want all of us to participate, but at least just, you know, coming up with a high-level criteria, sending it to everybody, make sure they approve what that deep dive means, and then go ahead and, and move in that direction and a report to the entire Board.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, I'd like to also have the deep dive involve a clean piece of paper. That we assume that the step program has done its job, it's finished. Well, let's start with a clean piece of paper and say, given where we are in the company, look, look in our generation mix, looking blah, 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 what should we do? Should we have a step program or should we not? Or is there something else that's totally different from step that would be better? So I'd like to see a clean piece of paper, and we've been doing this for twelve years. It's time to let this thing see the light of day.
Or it's time to review what has been accomplished, see the value of it, and then tweak it based on some new, new objectives that we have to meet as an organization. Or reviewing it may justify what you're asking us to support, which is to kill a program. I don't have enough data, but I was in here as a trustee to, to say that it's met its mandate. So I, I'm new. I would like to just get a deep dive in general.
What do you get out of this, Mr. Garza, and what, Mr. Kelly, and just said, just ended, Ms. Gonzalez?
I would tell all the trustees that we're prepared to provide the, you know, the deep dive in, in, in whatever way you would like to see it. I, I've, I've got extensive notes on what you specifically asked for moments ago. But I, I, I do believe there will be other areas of interest that we'll be prepared to pivot towards, to make sure that you have the information you need to make an informed policy decision about the future. Okay.
Well, I think even, you know, the mayor and I don't agree on a lot of things, but I think even the mayor said that, that let's, let's take a look at this program and, and see what's in there. Now, if we make the assumption the program's going to continue under any circumstances, to me, that's just a tweaking of an existing program. I'd like to start with, with letting the sun shine down on this thing, on a clean piece of paper, and say, do we still need this program? If so, how should it be structured? If we don't need it, should we do something else? But I don't, I don't particularly want to protect this program and said, at the end of the day, we're going to come out with the same program, we're just going to tweak it. I'd like to say, at the end of the day, we're going to do what's right, whatever it is.
I'm just a.
I, I don't think we can enter that today. I think that we should run it through the committee.
I'm just a little confused about.
I'm sorry, sir, we can't hear you.
I, I'm just saying, Mr. Kelly.
Well, what I'm saying, Dr. Mackey, is we can say that, that we're making the assumption that we're going to keep step regardless. And so all this is going to be is a tweaking of what we have. That's one, one idea.
Okay, okay, okay.
My idea is we say step has served its purpose, it's finished, it's over with. Now, we're going to take a clean piece of paper and say, what do we want to do going forward? Do we want to do another step program? Do we want to do something totally different? What do we want to do rather than saying, we're going to take this twelve-year-old program and tweak it? So that's the difference between.
Okay, okay, I understand that.
But to be clear, I don't think I'm, I'm advocating to tweak it. What I'm advocating is to have a deep dive, lessons learned, and how do we move forward to, to support two of my trustees, but to also see how we can repurpose and meet mandates, whether they're federal mandates, local, local requests from our city council. I don't know. I just think, again, we, we need to reevaluate, and we have eleven months to do so.
I agree with you. All I'm saying is though.
Sir, we can't hear you.
We have to say.
Trustee Kelly, can you get closer to the mic?
Mic, get on your mic, your mic.
Yeah.
Your mic.
Thank you.
I agree with what you're saying. The only question I'm saying is, do we have to make a, an assumption going in that the step program's going to continue? I think that's the only point that we're discussing. And I'm saying you can't do a deep dive, you can't do a full course look if you say, well, we're going to keep the Chevrolet. Now, we may put a Pontiac engine in this, but we're going to keep the Chevrolet. No, we're going to just get a new car. We don't know what it's going to be. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, I got you.
You're advocating for us to be creative with the new Lamborghini. I don't want a Chevy.
Okay.
So I made a motion to approve, we, we've gotten off on a discussion on a different matter, but I, I made a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
We've approved, we've approved all of them except G, one, two, and three. So we need to start, we, right now, we need a motion on G one.
We, we never voted. We never, we never got a second.
We never voted.
So we should be discussing now the consent.
Yeah, but do we need a sucking on that?
Wait, we voted, the motion to approve was made by Mr. Steen, it was seconded by Mr. Kelly. All were in favor, none were opposed for approving thirteen A through F.
Mm-hmm. Forgive me, okay, I, I didn't realize.
Yeah, that's why I moved on to number one.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kelly.
We, we on number one, so right now, we're discussing G one, but we haven't had a motion on the table, what we're going to do.
The motion was either, again, we're, we're supporting, and I'll reiterate for Rudy, if I understand this correctly, option number one provides us eleven months to do what you've asked us to do, both Mr. Steen and Mr. Kelly, to evaluate the program, be creative with what the future looks like, or not support it at all. And that means clear path, is that clear path?
Clear, clear results.
Clear results for twenty, and then the item underneath it is Franklin.
Franklin for ten, a little over ten.
That would be support, but right now, you're just voting on number one.
Number one.
Which is mainly rebates.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
The debated item is the program, but we're not focused on the program right now. We just need to focus that with, if we vote for option one, we give eleven months to make that decision that we heatedly debated.
I'm good on the eleven months.
Y'all, y'all have to vote, you have to make a motion.
I know, but I'm just, again, I'm just, I'm just for the sake of wanting the motion, clarifying things. All right, so I'm going to put it out there. I'm going to go ahead and vote for option number one for clear.
Clear result.
You're not vote.
Clear results.
You have to make a motion.
Motion to support, as recommended by Rudy.
Ms. Gonzalez have a motion for general services, energy efficiency program. She have a motion on the table. Do we have a sucking?
Second.
That was sucking by the mayor. Okay, Ms. Uh, Ms. Ramirez, would you please do a roll call?
Yes, sir. So I, we have a motion and a second to approve the general services energy efficiency program. To be clear, you all have been referring to that as the twenty million dollars for clear results. Mr. Steen, do you vote, sorry, trustee Steen, do you vote to approve?
So in, in essence, we're, when they put this up, there was an option one, that's, that's what we're voting on?
Yes, sir, we are all talking about option one as noted on slide number ten.
Option one, first bullet.
It's option one.
Option one, first bullet.
Option one, and it relates to G one, and it's the first bullet on.
That's a rebate program.
Five one sixty-three.
Fine, I vote no.
Vice Chair Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor?
Aye.
Trustee Kelly?
I have to know if it's linked to the deep dive slash clean piece of paper. The answer is yes, then I'm voting yes.
We will do, we will do the items that you asked, including a deep dive.
But it's not in the motion.
That, I'm good.
Ed, it's not in the motion. Do you want, do you want it in the motion? It's not in the motion.
Well, that's what I'm asking, is it.
I'll, I'll make a friendly amendment to the motion language that the approval of, of item G one includes a staff full analysis of the return on investment and other factors related to any further approvals of a step or flex step program.
Okay, we have an amendment, we have a, we have an amendment by the mayor, do we have a sucking?
Okay.
Okay, we have a sucking. Mr. Mr. Kelly's sucking it, can we do a roll call for the amendment?
Yes, sir. Taking votes on the motion to approve.
The minutes, I mean, the amendment first.
Yes, the, the motion to approve option one as amended to include full staff analysis and deep dive.
Can, can I make a suggestion? Since you, you made the motion, correct? You could, you could accept that as a friendly amendment? Are you willing to do that?
Yes, I'm willing to accept the friendly amendment.
And whoever seconded it could accept it, and we, we wouldn't have to vote on the amendment.
Okay, Mr. Kelly seconded.
I, I, I offered it as a friendly amendment.
And I, I've accepted your friendly amendment.
Still voting on the main motion, yeah.
If we can vote on the amendment, then we can go back to the main motion. It would be simpler that it was changed. I mean, it was a motion, the amendment was by the mayor, and then we'd have to vote on the main motion.
Yes, sir. Generally speaking, if you have, if Vice Chair Gonzalez has accepted the amendment, then the votes would stand, and I would go back and double-check. Trustee Steen, does that change the way that you would vote now that the motion has been amended?
I'm, I gave the reasons that I'm voting and so I'll vote no, yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mayor, does that change your vote? I'm assuming no, since you suggested it. And trustee Kelly voted afterwards, so Chair Dr. Mackey.
Where did trustee Kelly?
What am I voting?
Voted.
He hasn't voted.
Yes, you, you seconded it and voted, and then said you approved the motion as amended. So to be extremely clear, I have no, yes, yes, yes. Yes, so we have four in favor and one opposed, and the amended motion on option one, subpoint one, as to the approval of the twenty million to clear result passes.
Okay, do we have to go back and vote on the main motion, Ms. Ramirez?
We still have, I would suggest.
Number two.
That someone make a motion to approve option one, the second bullet, which is the ten million dollars on Franklin Energy.
So we're going to the second, we, we don't have to vote on the main motion. You seen?
It's been amended.
She accepted, okay, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we do it right. Okay, now, we, we on, uh, Franklin, uh, general services weatherization program. That's, uh, under procurement item, on item thirteen, G procurement item, number two. General services, do we have a motion?
I'll move option one, a staff recommendation of what we added.
Okay, okay, do we have a sucking?
Mayor, can you be, be clear to include the audit of all the small business and prime?
So that's, that's G three.
Right.
No, no, we're just in two now, not three.
But Franklin is part of two.
No, not, not G three. Her, her answer was on one and two.
Okay, great.
You, you, and one and two. We'll do all of that in.
Do we have a sucking? Okay.
Second.
Second, uh, by Ms. Gonzalez. Okay, do we have any further comments, questions? If not, can we do a roll call?
Yes, sir. Trustee Steen?
No.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor?
Aye.
Trustee Kelly?
Yes. Aye.
Chair Dr. Mackey, four in favor, one opposed?
Now, we on professional service, on item thirteen. G procurement item, three, professional services, engineering services for power generation. Okay, do we have a motion on that item? G three, on the consent agenda. Yes, that's the one you, you asked to pull.
Yes, on that one, I'm going to vote no.
Oh, you can't.
I'm getting confused.
Okay, okay. Okay.
I thought we were still on Franklin and the other one.
Okay, we, no, we, we all for those. We, we're on, um, this professional services, engineering services for power generation. Do we have a motion on the table?
I'll move.
We, a motion by Mr. Kelly, do we have a sucking?
There's a second, we haven't voted for it yet, right?
No, no, no.
Second, second to start discussing.
Okay, we have a sucking by Ms. Gonzalez. Now, we open the floor up for discussions. Okay.
Any discussion, I just want to vote.
Okay, any other discussions on item thirteen, G procurement item, Okay, any other discussions on item 13, G procurement item 3, professional services, engineering services. We have a motion by Mr. Kelly. We have a sucking by Ms. Gonzalez. Now, if we could go ahead and roll call.
Yes, sir. Trustee Steen, this is, we have a motion to approve.
Item number G3.
Yes.
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Trustee Kelly?
Yes.
Chair Dr. Mackey?
Aye.
Four to one, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you all for that consent agenda items. I'll, I'll taking care of. We've completed all that. So now, we can go back to item number 11, flex, flex power bundle update, discussion by Mr. Kevin Polo. And we, if we can get this, then we can go to executive session.
Good afternoon, trustees. I'm very happy to be back to talk with you again about flex power bundle. Today, my, really, my sole objective is just to provide you an update on our request for proposal. We'll cover several items, including really talking about the bundled approach, timing, and to give you a brief update on the request for proposal process. Did want to point out as I start today's discussion that we've had multiple touchpoints with the board this month, each of them with a distinct intentional focus. We met last week with the Technology and Resilience Committee. We covered security risks and specifically how we evaluate, how we've incorporated security into our evaluation process. We talked about different technology, the technology readiness, if you will, for different firming and storage technologies. We also covered several items that have more of an operations purview in terms of an overview of our flex power bundle process and the priority solar selection methodology. And that brings us to today's update here in front of the full board. As we look at moving from what I would call the request for proposal, RFP evaluation process, or phase of the, of the project into the contracting and execution phase of the project, I did want to touch base just and focus on the, the structure of the solar projects that we're looking for. And, you know, our intent with awarding the 900 megawatts of solar is to focus on what I will call utility scale projects. So those are the large, single site centralized projects, could range anywhere from 10 megawatts to several hundred megawatts, a very different type of projects from what we would see on the smaller distributed scale projects. So if you think of something like a rooftop solar program, for example, those, those types of projects have traditionally been aligned with our STEP programs. I've shown this slide several times, so I'll kind of just touch base on the gray box that you see at the top right, really focus from our prioritized solar selection, we're looking to award an early project, you know, roughly 200 to 250 megawatts that we would do in advance of the full bundle, so to speak. So the rest of that solar, we would award along with the storage and the, and the firming projects as part of, as part of the overall bundle. Again, as I, we advanced the project from the evaluation phase into the, into the execution phase and contracting phase, I did think it would be good to step and just touch base on timing. Why pursue flex power bundle now? And the answer to that really lies in our aging infrastructure. So as, as a municipal utility, we have an obligation to serve our community's needs. And at the core of that strategy, over the years, has been our intent to maintain a, what I would call a generation-long position. We have always maintained sufficient generation to meet our community's needs, plus a little extra. That little extra is what we've called our reserve margin. And so, from an aging infrastructure perspective, Frank mentioned earlier, our aging Brannick gas team units, for example. So we have those three gas power plants, all built in the late 1960s that are ending the, nearing the end of their design life. And so we have an opportunity to replace that generation, that aging generation, with newer and cleaner options. As I said, to maintain that, that core element of our strategy to meet our community's needs, we would intend to replace that Brannick capacity with additional generation. And so we believe that the combination of solar, storage, and firming capacity is really all needed to meet our customers' needs going forward. And so as we look at adding that replacement generation, we've, we don't, we believe there's no perfect single solution, and we think that more value is going to be created through bundling. So when we look at adding, you know, 900 megawatts of solar, a very large addition, we do feel it's an opportunity to leverage proven technology, zero emissions, environmentally friendly technology. The energy storage portion gives us a, a element of capacity that we can use to charge, for example, when our, our energy needs are lower, and then release that generation, and release that energy at a later part of the day when we have, our customer usage is much higher. And then finally, the firming capacity is intended to be flexible, reliable generation that we can call on, that can be dispatched, you know, at times when our solar generation is not producing up to its full generation capabilities. We frequently talk about how our decisions are powered by our guiding pillars. I do believe that as we look at the flex power bundle and this bundled approach, it does touch every one of our guiding pillars. You know, adding, as I said, the, the zero emissions resource, the large amount of 900 megawatts of solar certainly speaks to our environmental responsibility pillar. As we look to get those 900 megawatts of solar, we do believe that we'll have multiple projects that will be awarded. So that reliance on multiple projects as opposed to a single, single site really adds to the resiliency of our portfolio because we have, our generation in that case will be spread over multiple vendors, multiple geographic locations. So it'll be less susceptible to any single, what I'll call, single point of failure where a single issue could, you know, affect all 900 megawatts of our generation at the same time. With the addition of the, the storage and the firming products, that aids the reliability of our portfolio. As I said on the last slide, it does provide the ability for additional, that energy to be dispatched when the solar is not producing at its full capabilities. And again, from the customer affordability perspective, we think that the bundled approach ultimately produces the most value for our customers. The last two pillars, safety and security, are certainly at the fabric of everything we do here at CPS Energy. And so as we've, we've incorporated safety and security into all of our evaluation processes, and really intend to look for like-minded partners that have that same value on, on safety and security. And then, as far as our, where we are in the, in the RFP process, we expect to be in a position to award our priority solar hopefully early this fall. We do target later this fall into, hopefully, the early winter as far as the final bundle awards. And again, just to point out, as we look to award those contracts, the capacity that we're adding through the flex power bundle is intended to be added through power purchase agreements. So we're not owning and operating directly those assets. We won't be spending capital or owing in. Those, we'll be buying the energy as it's produced. It was mentioned earlier, solar and, and wind, for example, flow through our fuel costs, and that's exactly how these power purchase agreements would, would have, would be handled. And part of that contracting process will be how we hold our vendors accountable, for example, our partners. We'll have minimum guarantees or guarantees as far as minimum energy that we produced over the course of the year. We'll have scheduled damages, you know, for example, if they're late on meeting major milestones or when they bring the commercial, meet the commercial operation date and actually bring the unit online. So we'll have various, all those will be elements of the, of the final contracts that we negotiate with our partners. As I mentioned earlier, you know, we built our evaluation scorecards, if you will, our methodology on the guiding pillars. So it's allowed us to focus, obviously, on price, but certainly also on the overall quality of the vendor and the quality of the projects. It's also given us an opportunity to really evaluate the projects individually, as well as how they come together into the full final bundle. And so in closing, I would just like to, to say that we're extremely proud of pioneering a, a new approach, a new way of thinking about how we procure our energy resources, you know, to meet our community's needs going forward.
Okay.
I'll pause for any questions.
You have any questions, comment for Mr. Polo? If not, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good presentation. At this time, Ms. Ramirez, would you please take us into executive session?
Yes, sir. At this time, the board is going to recess into executive session to discuss matters that have been duly posted under several provisions of chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including consultation concerning attorney-client matters under section 551.071, deliberations and other authorization on real property under section 551.072, prospective gifts or donations under section 551.073, personnel matters under section 551.074, security personnel or devices under section 551.076, to deliberate regarding security audits and devices under section 551.089, to deliberate under the Texas Government Code under section 418.183 subsection F, about confidential information under the Texas Homeland Security Act, to discuss economic development negotiations under section 551.076, and to deliberate, vote, or take final action upon competitive matters under section 551.086. At the conclusion of the executive session, the board will reconvene in open session, continue the meeting. It is 4:00 PM. We're breaking for executive session.
Yes, sir. It is 5:01 PM and the board has concluded executive session. I can confirm that there were no votes taken and no matters were discussed that were not part of the posted agenda. We do have a quorum. All members are present.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Okay, on the next is item 14 on the committee report. We have A, Master Planning Oversight Committee meeting held on 7/26/2021. B, Audit and Finance meeting held on 7/28/2021. We have C, Employees Benefit Oversight Committee meeting held on 7/28/2021. A and F, EBOC Alliance Risk Subcommittee meeting held on 7/28/2021. Nomination Committee meeting held on 8/12/2021. At this time, do I have any recommendations from Mr. Steen and Mr. Kelly to put these in the minutes?
I'm sorry.
The committee reports.
No, I will say on the nominating committee, I want to...
You're myself. He's getting to me, Janie. I can't... On the nominating committee, I'd like to say that first, the staff, I think, has done an incredibly good job of making this known to the community. I read another report just yesterday in the Express News about the nominating committee. So, part of our charge was to make sure that everybody who had an interest in applying was aware of the opportunity. And so, I think they've done an incredible job with that. Secondly, I can tell you that I have reviewed 15 applicants myself. That we have a very good pool, in my opinion, within that 15. But I understand that there are several more coming in. We will shut off applications tomorrow at the close, I think, 5:00 PM officially tomorrow afternoon. And it looks to me like we will have plenty of good candidates because within the 15, we've got some good ones. And as I said, I understand more coming in. And then finally, I will tell you that on August 18th, we held a public information session. And I thought it went well. And I know of at least two applications, Madam CEO, that came in as a result of that meeting, and there may be more. So, it was also a good program. So, long story short, Mr. Chairman, I think the nominating committee is moving along quite nicely.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, for report. And the report would be in the... Committee reports would be in the minutes for the agenda. Okay, next, we have item number 15, Financial Transaction Physical Year 2022. That's Discussion and Possible Vote, Ms. Julie Johnson. That's the last item, 15.
So, good afternoon, Chair Dr. Mackey and Board of Trustees. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you today. My presentation today will focus on the anticipated financing transactions needed to support our normal operations. So, the objectives and takeaways for today. So, after a short presentation, we will respectfully request your support and approval for our fiscal year '22 financing transactions. So, look at our agenda for today. We will start off by discussing the objective of our debt management program. And then, we will discuss our efforts to generate customer savings through our prudent debt management. I'll next provide you with an overview of our debt portfolio. And then, I'll walk you through the proposed financing transactions. And at the end, we will propose a vote for your approval. So, on this slide, we present our guiding pillars. Now, this is just a reminder that we balance these guiding pillars, and all business decisions are based on a foundation of financial responsibility. So, as shown on the previous slide, financial responsibility underpins our guiding pillars. And so, to that end, the objective of our debt management program is to take a proactive approach to obtain the lowest borrowing cost possible to support our capital program and also benefit our customers. And so, to do this, we proactively monitor the financial markets to refinance existing debt that can generate savings opportunities, to re-market debt, and to also take advantage of market conditions and lock in low long-term interest rates. So, on this slide, we show our average cost of debt, which you can see has decreased from 4.87 in fiscal year 2006 to 3.82 in fiscal year '22. And that has been decreasing right along with market interest rates. So, this is really a result of the stability in the long-term financial markets, but also it's our prudent debt management as we have refinanced expensive debt and replaced it with lower-cost sources of funding. So, the results of our efforts have been very successful. So, during the past 16 years, we have refinanced 3.9 billion of debt, and we have generated over 564 million of gross debt service savings. And so, this is a very significant amount of savings as it has reduced costs to our average residential customer by as much as $1.87 per month.
Is the 382-year average weighted cost of capital on your senior debt, is that what you're saying?
Senior, yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, on this slide, we present our debt portfolio. So, we just maintain a balance of diversified debt instruments with both short-term debt as well as long-term debt in our total portfolio, which is $6.1 billion. So, it's our strong credit that provides us with the opportunities to keep a balance of these debt instruments, which in turn helps us keep borrowing costs low for our customers. So, on this slide, we have the... We list the financing transactions. And as a reminder, the proposed financing transactions support normal operations. Winter Storm Yuri is not included. So, starting at the top, we have a required remarketing transaction again this year. And so, this transaction will allow us to remarket the bonds to current interest rates. We also have the 2012 and 2014 refunding transactions. And these are actually a carryover from fiscal year 2021. We plan to continue to monitor these transactions and will execute when the economics are within our threshold. Right now, the projected net present value savings of these transactions are approximately $43 million. So, we also have commercial paper refunding. As a reminder, we use commercial paper throughout the year to finance a portion of our capital program. So, what this transaction will do is it'll allow us to take the commercial paper long. We can then lock in those low long-term interest rates. And it also reestablishes a portion of our commercial paper program liquidity, I'm sorry, capacity. All right. The last item on this list is the, this is a new item, and this one was added since we had our conversation with the Audit and Finance Committee members. However, we did include all of the details in a board communication, which was emailed to you earlier this month. So we recently received a competitive offer to extend our commercial paper liquidity facility at the same cost that we pay now. So this would give us the ability to lock in a very favorable rate for an additional three years, and it also enables us to secure the liquid, the related liquidity for, through 2026. So this was an unsolicited offer, and so it is validation of the good relationships that we have worked very hard to establish with the financial community, and it's also another reason why it's so important to protect our strong credit ratings. So at this point, we are asking for your support, and we respectfully request your approval to execute these transactions over the next 12 months. This will provide potential savings to our customers and the liquidity flexibility to support our normal operations. I will be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments?
Am I reading this right, that there's no new money involved here?
No, sir, no new money. I mean, commercial paper is what we utilize to finance our capital program during the year, and so the transaction that is on this list is to take that long.
Great. Well, and it's amazing that you're able to affect interest savings in the low-interest-rate environment we have, so congratulations on that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much for the presentation. It's just fascinating to watch you and Ben Gourzel and work to save folks money just by working the market the way you have. Do you have any estimate on the dollar savings as a result of the refinancing you're planning to do off of this action today?
Refinancing what, sir? I'm sorry.
You're refinancing some of the debt as a result of the action today?
Yeah, the two, the two financing transactions, the 2012s and 2014s, they're estimated at $43 million.
I see. Okay, that's on slide, slide eight?
Yes, yes, slide eight.
Great, fantastic. Good job. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion to approve item 15, Financing Transaction by Mr. Steen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gonzalez. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item 16, Adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. Move, Mr. Kelly? Second, whoever's second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Gonzalez. All in favor to adjourn the meeting?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None opposed? Motion carries to adjourn the meeting. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you all for a wonderful board meeting, all of y'all.